I was with you.
And and she be and she so she flew out to be with me on the ride back from Philly. And was.
In awe of your driving prowess?
She was like, having a GPS in the car is not a good idea because you're just trying to beat the time. I'm like, yes.
Guilty.
I drove the whole time. She said, do you want me to take over? I'm like, no, I'm good. And by the time I was like, probably not good. It was most of the way through Indiana and I was too stubborn to to give up. That's too stubborn to hand off at that.
So not yours? No, this is Ted and this is Madarina. Let me grab.
No, yours is Maya.
Oh, yeah.
Computer.
Computer. In my world, these are.
These are what?
Light edits. No. Did you make it? Did you make me look like a slacker?
No, not like a slacker, but I I I raised you. I met your.
Yes, you met my bigger.
I did.
I like it. It's the way we roll, man.
Survey. As Susie and Lady just read, I wasn't sure if you were including Christine's answer from your. Yeah, stick.
I don't think she sent it to us. Not send the holistic one?
Yeah. Yeah.
Do you want me to forward that?
I just took care of it.
Awesome. Thanks.
How are you doing Christina?
What'd you say?
With the pregnancy.
Oh, you're so quiet to me. I'm sorry. I didn't know what.
You and the whole is here is. Yeah. You doing okay?
I'm doing okay. As I like almost fall off my chair, but yes, thank. I have four more days of work, so that's like the exciting.
Also, probably ten million things.
And then I remember, oh, yeah, but. Oh, no, I'm at the point where I'm very excited. Like, I feel after today, I felt a lot better of like passing things off and getting most everything wrapped up.
Ted, how are you?
Here, Matt.
You muted.
Ted is fine. I'm going back for yet another cast tomorrow and maybe in two weeks I'll be in a walking cast.
Excellent.
But you could all you could all choose what color cast I should get tomorrow.
And for once it was Maya who said pink and not me. It was good enough for Winston Churchill, Ted. I think it's good enough for you.
All right, Madarina has elected. So we'll call this meeting to order.
Oh, Madarina is on.
Yeah. Yeah, she was able to. So well, the secretary call the role, please.
Trustee Bloom.
Here.
Trustee Chuck Porte.
I hear, but I can't remember. Do I need to the motion for us to be?
Do I have to wait?
I thought we.
Yeah.
Sorry, okay.
Yeah.
Trustee Bloom. Trustee Gon Wu.
Uh, present.
Trustee Fairfax is present. Trustee Fox. Oh, no, trusty.
Is it remote?
I have one job. One job.
You do not have one job. You have many jobs.
But this is like the most important and I, yeah.
We have a forum president. The is there a motion to authorize virtual participation for trustees Foss, Chaco, Berte, and Rogers?
Moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded. Is there a discussion? Hearing on those in favor, say aye.
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 Posting. Uh, is we are approved. Uh, thank you. Next item will be. Yes.
Trustee Chuck Porte. Trustee Foss.
Um, we're voting on what now?
Wait, this is just, this is just a roll call now that you are off.
Trustee Foss is here remotely.
Trustee Rogers.
The screen seems to have frozen.
And she's muted. Trustee Rogers, you here?
I'm here. Sorry, my internet.
Okay. No problem. Uh, next item will be public comment. Megan.
Hello, my name is Huguenot. I spoke to you two weeks ago about my displeasure with the handling of the firing of Miss Dixon. Um, I left the meeting early, but I watched it and I have a couple of comments about things that went were discussed. Um, first, I want to thank trustee Foss for his comment, a little too little, a little too late concerning the standard engagement survey. Um, having administered that surveys myself and having been on the receiving end of them. Um, I don't really understand how it's a productive practice or exercise without permanent leadership. But I do appreciate the board's optimism and I hope it can be successful and I respect that you feel an obligation to follow this obligation through. However, I do worry about the return on investment in this exercise. Um, I don't know what the cost of this is going to be. I assume you're going to discuss it tonight. Um, I look forward to hearing what it's going to be. I've heard amounts thrown around like twenty eight thousand was way too much. Ten thousand was a little above our budget. There was one earlier on that was a couple thousand dollars, but you dismissed it because they looked to empower Miss Dixon when you were looking to disempower her when she still was in her position. Um, I think if some of these amounts would be very difficult to get a return, a good return on your investment, um, but I hope for everyone's sake you can. Um, I hope it's a good use of staff's time and I hope it's a good use of the community's resources. But the real thing I want to discuss was a comment that was made during the discussion. Um, when Miss Wolf brought that she wanted to conduct a review of what happened around the Palestinian cultural event. Now, you, the board, had said, Miss Dixon wasn't fired for one incident. And I don't believe from what I've looked at that the conflict between the board and Mystics and really centered around the way that of that, I think there are other things that were going on. But I do empathize with Miss Wolf wanting to get to the bottom of it because it was kind of a disaster. Um, all of our newspapers have it as the headline. The Tribune picked it up as a headline. So everybody in the world thinks that that was why she was fired. Everybody who's not paying attention to the details of these events thinks that was the reason she was fired. And I also understand that there's a group of people in this community who feel that they were genuinely hurt by the way that that went down. And so for all those reasons, I think it's a real, there's a real value in investigation into what happened there. However, I lost some support when trustee Fairfax said, quote, "We should consider someone with lived experience, experience being marginalized and stereotyped to assist in this investigation." Here's where I started to have problems because I wondered if those marginalized people would include a black woman in a position of power whose decision who was seemed to be continually undermined by her employees whenever she had to make tough decisions. She wasn't trusted or respected by her bosses and not given due process at the end of her tenure. All which were seemingly given to her white predecessors. Or will lived experience in groups who are stereotyped includes members of the Jewish community where antisemitic incidents are four hundred percent since October seven. And the endorsement of antisemitic tropes, no bigger stereotype, have doubled in the last two years, especially among young people, which is really concerning. And the reason this group is especially relevant is they might seem to be a group who felt seen and heard by a public library leader that understood a nuanced difference between a library held event and a library led event in these tumultuous times. But I don't think he'll include either of these people in your investigation you conduct because they won't reinforce your binary views about the world, about good guys and bad guys. And it definitely wouldn't endorse your ill-considered and rash treatment of Miss Dixon. I suggest that these are probably some of your blind spots. Two months ago, sincerely, I would have trusted trustee Fairfax's suggestion as sincere and honest attempt to bring all voices to the table. But after watching the way this board treated Miss Dixon, I now agree much more with the opinion piece written in the Wednesday Journal titled Losing Its Moral Compass in reference to this board. And I really can't trust a group with normal with no moral compass to make a statement like that in good faith.
There is even one comments in writing ahead of the meeting. Uh, dear members of the board, as I reflect on your recent decisions and actions, I respectfully ask that you take a reflective look at yourselves as individuals and as a board and consider whether you are indeed equipped and qualified to govern the Oak Park Public Library System. I believe your recent actions have shown that you are ill-suited for this task. I am referring specifically to your abrupt and irresponsible firing of one of the best or perhaps the very best library directors the Oak Park Public Library has ever had. And also to to the poorly timed employee survey that is now set to take place after the director's firing rather than before. I deeply regret having ever voted for any of you. If your priority were not to smooth not the smooth functioning of a public library, then you should never have run for this office. Your rash, impetuous decisions have made the Oak Park Library a laughing stock. Moreover, you have been extremely irresponsible taxpayer money by causing the library to have to go through another director's search and hiring process. For what reason, I ask. There are so many other responses you could have pursued other than firing the director. You could have put wrong administrative lead. You could have waited until a thorough investigation of the situation had run its course. You could have waited until after the employee survey had been completed, reviewed. But no, instead you chose the reckless, foolhardy, knee-jerk response of firing the director. Instead of firing the director, you should have fired yourselves. You clearly are not suitable for the roles the voters of this community have entrusted to you. I, for one, will never vote for any of you again. Sincerely, sincerely, Sharon Gauthier. That concludes public comments. We'll move on to the RFP for executive director search firms. The goal of this uh will be to hopefully approve so that we can post next week. Um, as we had discussed previously, uh, for a period of two weeks for potential. Uh, you know, those who are interested to submit questions or clarifications that could lead to possible revisions of the document before a final two-week, uh, two or three-week window where uh there will be no other questions, only submissions. Uh, during that initial two weeks, we could receive some, you know, there were firms that were interested, they could submit once we post to begin with, but there could be revisions to the RFP so that they could, you know, may need to revise the submission to send in. But I, my hope is that tonight we can come to agreements on language um that will get posted to solicit firms to send in proposals uh for uh to conduct our executive director search.
Can I ask you one question?
Yes.
Um, you said posting two weeks along for revisions and then posting two weeks without. What kind of revisions would we be expecting? Just like further clarifications from folks who are attempting to fulfill the RFP?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
If there's any questions.
Yeah, that's, you know, hey, these two things seem to be in conflict, you know, stuff like that, you know, stuff that we put out there, but there's like, did you mean for this or did you mean for that and trying to get, you know? You know, those questions. So we have, we started from a document from our last RFP from that was posted um in uh December of twenty twenty one. Uh, and we've made, uh, variety of trustees have made suggestions related to that document. Uh, and for us to consider language in terms of, you know, these various pieces, uh, Maya did a number of, um, things of changes and rewrites. Suzanne, I know, did some. I had a couple of comments. I think Christina had a couple of comments and questions as well. So all this. I, the one thing I just want to jump on, like, real quick was, I know Suzanne suggested that uh, questions uh come to me. Uh, I think I'm okay with that. But I think when it comes time for, I think I would like to have a delineation between questions and submissions. I think I would feel more comfortable with submissions going to staff.
That's what we did.
Yeah. Um, so I think that that I I'm okay with, you know, speaking, you know, answering questions on behalf of the board and, you know, if there's something that I need to confer with Suzie and Lee about on a, you know, that might be more of a process or staff question, you know, I can cut, you know, reach out to them or communicate to the board if there's kind of more of a board idea, motivation question, but I think I would, I would feel more comfortable when it comes time for the submissions, like if you have questions can be to me, but submissions should go to rfp@oppl.org or to Suzie and Lee, something like that where um I I that's where I, that's where my hope is at this point is that.
You just don't understand what the distinctions are.
Well, I, well, I think in terms of the, because I, we, at this point, we haven't set who the review committee is. Um, and if, and I end up being a part of that, I I shouldn't be receiving them in advance.
Gotcha. Makes perfect sense. Thank you.
That, that's right. I'm sure.
I also would suggest that maybe it makes sense for the questions not to go to you because like I said, there's the proposal writers or the people who are reviewing who have sometimes a lot of questions. They might be very aggressive. They might ask questions that like color a reader against them. So if you have a neutral staff member who just compiles the questions and when appropriate sends them to the board, but then it's not you knowing.
Oh, so we don't know which question does which.
Right.
You got them.
Exactly. Because it's a way of of like. Yeah.
That's.
I was just trying to feel like it still said David Selig, so when I was.
I know.
Yeah, so Suzie had highlighted that and uh and his name at the at the end for, you know, for us to consider for that piece. So, um, Su- Suzie Lee, are you okay with?
Yeah, I think I would like the process to allow just a wee bit more in terms of like you're saying compiling the questions and then sending to the board to answer or the answering like.
I think it could be one of those things where you would compile the questions and then what you could answer, right? Because if it's something like how many staff do we have or what percentage of staff? Or what is the percentage of, you know, applications to open positions, like questions like that that talk to the health and everyday functioning of the library. Those are things that really only staff can and should answer. If there are questions about high-level governance issues, strategic missions, uh, strategic mission pieces, specifically what is in the board's purview, that makes absolute sense for them to be sent to the board. So if if you're not, if you're not comfortable with that, like we could funnel them and you just compile that list and we answer the questions and then we say, oh, Suzie or, you know, Lee, these seem like it would be a question for HR. This might be a question for, you know, collection. This is a question for, you know, whoever. And in terms of governance structure, the board would answer those.
Yeah, but it makes sense to compile them and send them to us and then we can answer the ones we can and send back what we can. Does that make sense?
Yeah, for, for Susan, for the, as Susan is saying.
Put some clarification on what direction, because either we'll compile and then send them all to you or what you were saying, Wyatt, is that we could review them. And if it's like, what is like a question that could come up is like, what is your circulation?
Yeah.
Here's, here's group one for board. Here's group two for staff.
Understand, like, oh, they want to know what, you know, do you plan to do a strategic plan next year? That's a question for you. That's an absolute question for us.
And maybe.
I would say, oh, sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna say if we, if there are questions that are things you can answer, you could answer them and then just.
As I say, I'd like the first off to be staff. If you're compiling the questions already, you've already got them in front of you. There's no need to ping pong them to us for us to ping pong them back.
As long as staff is comfortable with that.
I like the idea to of creating an RFP email address.
Yeah.
Yeah. And now, and that way it just.
So this, so this is Ted Foss and I just a few general comments. Um, I don't think that the last executive search was handled particularly well. Um, that's my personal opinion. I don't know how other people feel and and the candidate pool was um very, very small when it turned turned out there. I've already said that I would very much like to be on the executive search committee if if so chosen. But I do think that there are two things that I would also like to see on that search committee. I would like to see direct staff input um in the search committee. And also I do believe that it is very important to have the new executive director um have a graduate library degree. I think that that shows support to all of the wonderful professionals that we have on staff at present. And I think that it is very important and that is something that we specifically chose not to do in the last executive search. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Ted. Yeah, I think um as we move forward with the the search process with a firm, I think there will definitely, there's definitely going to be portions of that that involve the staff. Uh, I think for this first part, I think what I would in my mind, I I think would be for we get the all of the RFP responses in. There is a committee of the board of three trustees, Ted, you would be, you would volunteer to be one of those. Uh, would sit down and using a rubric, uh, you know, derived from possibly derived from pieces of of the RFP to evaluate uh, the firms and bring that group of three trustees would bring forward to the whole board two or three potential um finalists for the whole board to meet with via Zoom or if they're local and, you know, bring them in in person to have a conversation so that we can then as a board decide what that firm, uh, which firm we would be engaging with. Uh, and then from, you know, once that firm is in place, we would develop, you know, other, we would work with that firm to develop that process going forward as they lay out in their proposal as we discuss with them and with and with staff and the leadership team to engage them in that process. So this first part is finding the firm. And so I think we would have that that selection committee that would review all the proposals that come in and to recommend a few that come before the whole board for, you know, an interview or a conversation, which we did not do the last time. And I, and I think we have hopefully learned our lesson in that to uh have that conversation uh before selection now.
Okay, thank you for letting me put my uh my heart forward.
Thank you, Ted.
And Ted mentioned that before we did not have the MLIS. I think before we also didn't stress quite as much looking at how much experience a search firm has specifically with libraries. Is that something that we want to take more into account this time?
I, I, I would be comfortable with if they had done, if they'd done work in the public space, you know, something, you know, a school board or a park district or, you know, a village president or mayor, something of those uh pieces. I don't, I don't want. Right, I think I, you know, we have our, it's its own unique piece, even library directors in Illinois are different than library directors in other states, you know, in our governing structure and statutes, but there are common elements, I think, to all public sector executives that I I will be open to hearing a proposal from someone. I, I, I'm not going to rule them out, but I think I would want, if they want me to run on school districts, I'd like, I would like to hear from them is to say, why do you think you could do a library? I'm not going to say, don't, you know, no one here, but make your case.
Do we want to, do we want to make note of that? So under the proposal content, what we talked about, description of the firm's background, qualifications and years.
It's in here a little, but it's a, it is a little soft. It's in here about um similar organizations or something like that. Is there any?
Yeah.
And I thought it could be strengthened a little bit too.
Similar organizations including nonprofits, governing bodies.
Why they, maybe we add, why, you know, what in your experience do you think will lend to maybe a good search for um
Yeah.
Such as ours.
I wish I had.
I think that's a good call. I I would.
I think that's a good call. I, I would agree like what you're saying, we could strengthen it. But I also think some of this could show up in the rubric and doesn't necessarily have to be like. Discuss tonight, I think at length, like I think that, that's my perspective, like the. The RFP is what we want to confirm tonight, right? So then it's like the, uh, committee would be the ones to formulate the rubric. And figure out how we're gonna go forth with scoring. So I just don't want us to get too far down, like how we'll assess these. Instead focus on like what we're communicating externally.
Agreed. I, I just don't want me to get folks who have never done anything in this sphere. But maybe did like a bookstore and somehow think the best.
Um, so instead of saying under four bullet point, one, one, two, three. Fourth major bullet point down, so to say in evidence of experience working with similar. So it says evidence of experience working with similar organizations, comma, such as school districts, nonprofit. Organizations.
Governing bodies.
Uh, and actually instead of school districts, put other governing bodies such as school district, such as.
Governing bodies.
Governing bodies or governmental.
Yeah.
Bodies, school districts, nonprofit organizations, education, uh. You, do you think the universities? Parks. It is, I mean, it's such as, it's not. Park districts and universities, edu- uh, and higher ed, universities.
Higher education.
Higher education.
Hi, this is.
As would.
Hi, um, I feel like because we're talking about higher education, I should speak up. But I, I don't know if that's an equivalent example because everything else is, uh, elected publicly, like, uh, you know, in our case, I understand in. Some cases pu- uh, public library boards are also not publicly elected, but like those are. Uh, elected government entities in a way that higher ed boards are not.
How about hi- public?
It's like public sector and public. I don't, I don't, again, I would just, I would just emphasize like it's up to them and their proposal. To make the case to us that they're the right fit. So like, we don't have to spell it out. If they don't make the case, then that's a good reason to not go with them, right? So.
Yeah, I, and I, and I don't know that we want to think about every single possible example right now. I think like.
I think, yeah. This isn't really defined.
Well, yes.
Um.
Yeah, just like we are trying to, we are trying to. I think that, that's a good point of like they, we, you know, we're, we're asking for them to make the case to us. Um, that's why we should use them.
Yeah, it's as simple as just some of our organizations, please, um, explain why isn't. Your, what experience you think?
Evidence of experimenting with some similar organizations or governmental bodies.
Okay, done. I'll change that. Cool. And then please, um, let us know what experience you have that you think would lend to.
Can I, uh, I have a question, um. About OPPL. Weren't we told recently that it's not the library style guide to say use OPPL? And that we actually do Oak Park Public Library?
Yeah, and, yeah, I saw you highlight that and I was trying to find the, um.
How did she call that?
Maybe when you guys are done, you can just go.
Could find her voice.
Everything wants all the edits and then it's.
There, there's usually, then you can have it in a document and have an abbreviation. And that then is used in a document like this, even if it is.
So like the first time you use it, the first time you use it and then you put in the.
And that's in the introduction.
That's usually the case of the style guide like that. I can look at the style guide.
We, we, we can, we can clarify, let's, we can both clarify that after we get the substantive.
Okay.
Items resolved.
And what we're, how, what way should we go through this? Cause, cause Ted has already raised a couple issues. And then we've got a couple issues. Should we go through it?
Let's go, let's start at the, yeah, let's start at the introduction, um.
Wait, is everyone quiet or?
Yes, we're all quiet. Sorry, we're, we're going through the introduction, um, section one, um.
I know why we did this the last time around. When we want to have the portion on. Anti-racism in the introduction, or do we just want that to be part of the qualifications that they bring?
I didn't ask, asking to ask, not.
Yeah. I'll be honest, when I wrote this, rewrote, drafted red line. I just had it as one line. The Oak Park Public Library Board of Class C, the board, issues this for classroom proposal. For qualified vendors respondents to assist the board in identifying Oak Park Public Library's OPPL. Next executive director, period. That was it. But then I was, I look at our mission statement and I felt like maybe just like. A quick line about that made sense, but I.
And there's an about the public library. I think it belongs in about the library.
It, I mean, I just, I honestly just cut and pasted our statement. And I cut that. So it's just that one line. It's very direct. Well, I don't know if it's very direct. I tried to be a direct. Um, and I cut that and then, um.
The board sees the partner to help, right, to help identify any director to partner and ensure our vision, mission and strategic priorities are accomplished. I think that's worth keeping in that first paragraph, but I think that. You're, you're, yeah, I think that, I think that, you know, the, the, the OPL seeks to be an anti-racist organization. And the anti-racism is one of our, uh, libraries' four strategic priorities alongside engagement, learning and stewardship. I, I do think that that.
Line or sentence to leave.
I believe I've seen that in, um, in job. Uh, listings that the library has had for other positions.
Yes, well, I was gonna say, let's maybe move that into the section about the library. Instead of like that, you know, let's keep that in that first paragraph of the introduction. About what our goal of this is, you know, let, let's keep that and then we can move the. The part, the part about the anti-racist organization and our strategic priorities into the section about. You know, the, that's about the library.
But, you know, just like saying, I have, I have seen it moved on that way in other. So I've seen four of this library.
Right.
So it's. Oh, this is not.
This is there. Yeah, and I, and I can add a sharp myself on that as well.
Right, right.
What, what is the message we're putting out with this statement versus the job listing?
Our mission, so at our vision, our mission.
So I proposed to Maya that we do, um, under the Oak Park Public Library, the second paragraph. As a library for everyone, our mission to is to share information services and opportunities to fulfill Oak Park's aspirations. Insert the question, the sentence from the first paragraph. OPPL seeks to be an anti-racist organization and anti-racism is one of the library's four strategic priorities alongside engagement, learning and stewardship. Back down to the about photograph. Our vision to empower every voice in our community and so on.
That sounds good. We have no other changes to that first paragraph, the about the village. I'm okay with that, um.
Hi, I'm sorry, but i- in the part that Maya is typing in right now, which is. The first paragraphs and the first couple of paragraphs under Oak Park Public Library. Uh, when I see it electronically, it seems that it's repetitive. That the first. Maya, do you see what I'm talking about in the doc? I don't know how it's, you know. I don't know what it looks like in the printed version, so I, I, I'm sorry if it's confusing. But, uh, I have it as a paragraph that says the Oak Park Public Library OPPL serves a diverse population both within our buildings and out. Our vision is to empower every voice in our community. Our mission is to share the information services and opportunities. That fulfill Oak Park's aspirations. Um, and that, that was, that's in the next paragraph as well. And also we use the word aspire, uh, further down that bigger paragraph as well, so. I mean, it's fine for us to have many aspirations, but maybe one of the aspirations be to find synonyms.
I will, I will be honest, that is the. I'd rather appreciate that, but that's also the language directly from our library. Uh, website. So I, I'm fine with changing the words, but that's one of those like. I, I just wanted to say what we're putting out to the public and that's what we, we do put out to the public on our website.
But I'm sorry, you're saying that we.
I, I, I literally just went to our website, went to our mission statement and cut and paste it in. So that's, I, I, I don't disagree. I like synonyms, but I'm also saying like. To be aware of the fact that this is what we publicly post as our mission statement.
I mean.
I can change it. I'm happy to change it, but that's just something to just be kind enough that long.
I mean, I don't feel, I don't feel strongly enough to say that we need to change it everywhere. I just think, you know.
We can change it.
Um, I, you know, so, uh, Maya, I'm still seeing the, our vision to empower every voice in our community. And, um. Opportunities that fill Oak Park's aspirations. I'm seeing that repeated. I don't know, are the people who have the printed version, see those sentences repeated?
It's on the second page. So the second page has. OPPL strategically partnered us into, so it does feel a little bit.
Okay, so then let's, okay, so let's do paragraph. Okay, first paragraph. And we said an opportunities and then just cut Oak Park's aspirations. So it's just an opportunity, period. So that's one time we remove the duplicative. As a library.
Is that a vision? Because if that's literally the vision, that is a place where, if it's, if it's vision like. An official vision versus a vision.
No, we're, we're quoting it. We're not citing it. It's like we're referencing it, but it's like, we're not saying that this is our vision statement. I.
Well, it's a difference between a vision and then, and using the term vision. And I just want to know which one this is.
I mean, I. I'm open to either. I just feel like it's important to give whoever is. Reviewing this is, uh, uh, and interested in responding. A little information about what the library is. That's why, you know, I like just grabbing it from the website because it does talk about the fact that we are a book sanctuary. That is something that we value.
I do, I do think we should have the book sanctuary in that. It's just the way that it was just kind of put in before it wasn't clear. I think, I thought we needed to introduce it, so, um, it was something that we should take it out completely. Um, but the mission, vision, values. That's what I, I just want to make sure if, um. Oh, and there's a typo on our website. Our vision to empower everybody, that should be our vision is, I guess. Um. Yeah, so it.
Oh, I see. We have mission twice. Was that? Okay.
So we had, before it said these statements were developed through, and I didn't know what this, the reference was. We somehow, maybe because it was cut and paste, there was no reference to these statements. So I just.
Fair.
When our mission, visions, strategic plans were developed.
So then what if we cut the first sentence that, what are you, you highlighted? And it's literally just a copy of the sentence above. And it just says our mission, vision, our mission, vision and strategic plans were developed. Uh, through turning outward.
Can you possibly instead of like deleting and, are you in, um, in suggestion mode?
No, I was.
Because then people can't see what was there.
Sorry.
Well, I, I think the problem is that when you're in suggesting. The, like, when you, when you're in suggesting mode and you, uh, and you change something that's already a track change. Then it doesn't show up as a second layer of track change. So that's why I, I've taken to just putting things in brackets if it's within. Does, I'm sorry, does, does that make sense? Like.
Yeah.
Yeah, so like, if, if you raised, like, if you're trying to suggest an edit to somebody else's suggested edit. It'll just change it. So then I'm trying to like put things in brackets so that you could see. That there exists a recommendation already and now there's like a second layer of recommendation.
But I think that's right. I think that's, that, that was a good idea to delete that. I just thought for the folks at home, they can't see it. So.
So I am in suggestion, but because I also added it.
I just had to put it in brackets.
It's not, we have to, okay.
Sorry. I, I keep referencing back the different and. My, it's really. Thinking this on.
I'm just not this dear with documents. I'm like, I can, we can, we can come up with better words, guys, so.
Okay, so all of the highlight would be deleted.
Yeah, I think that's good. Does that work for you, Madrema? Kind of looking that way and not talking to the elbow.
Yeah.
I just can't see there.
Well, the camera spins.
Um, am I gonna frustrate people while she's doing, I talk about elsewhere? I think we should.
If it's here, not jumping it. It's okay.
All right. Go ahead.
Just because I think we'll.
Okay, so our, so it's our mission, uh, vision and strategic plans were developed. Through turning, should be outwardly.
It's a, I feel like it's a very specific coined phrase from Harvard, turning outward.
Yeah.
Yes, grammatically turning outwardly makes more sense, but turning outward is the phrase that is.
Oh, Harvard.
Well, no, I'm just, I'm explaining why.
And we can put it back to the years long process. It just, I, I found out proper. If you want to put it back, that's fine. I just got, I lost the, you know, the specifics of it. So, um, yeah, you can put it back. Or just extended, this is another.
I think extended, um, because I, I think extended is, uh, better.
An extended process?
I think it's turning outward. Or it's.
Um, turning outward. Oh, it's, it has a grammar. Oh, my gosh. You saved it.
And listening to what kind of community or neighbors want to live in.
There are reason I use in brackets.
I think that was too, because it, it was a.
Addition.
An addition.
Oh.
That didn't.
I'm saying that we're going to accept it.
Okay.
Some would develop. Do you guys like by or through? Do you like by better?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think it's the correct preposition, right? We're developed by an extent pro, or, I don't know.
Yeah.
Sorry.
The by was leftover from turning out, taking out the process. Through is better.
Um, Oak Parkers told us, all right, give me a similar word to inspire.
Be hope, be strive, be.
I like strive, strive. Strive to live in a community that is diverse, equitable, inclusive, and empathetic, as well as a place that supports education. Health, literacy, safety, and affordability. Um, and then I see anti-racism is. Uh, highlighted in the last sentence.
But that was me, just to, just again, because they're clo- close by, just wondering if there's, you know.
So.
In terms of readability.
So, Matarina.
Yeah.
You have bracket anti-racism with its attendant values. Is that what you want to add, or is that what you're?
I, it's a, yeah, it's a recommendation instead of and. I think in the printed version, it says and values of accessibility. Um, but, but I think we mean like the, the ones in the parentheses are specifically tied to the. The values in boldface, right? So.
Right. So then I'm going to delete that with the intended values of, because that's. I think that can just be added, although we are, then, I, but I think that makes sense for the mission statement to have that level of repetitive. Repetitive.
Yeah, thank, no, it, it, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I replaced and, the word was and. And I replaced that with the, with the attendance, so it, so I. If, if, but if with the attendance. Okay, wow.
All right, it is important that anti-racism is supported as a fourth pillar in order to continue the value.
That feels more like something we would have in a job interview, in the job, job description as opposed to the R F P.
Agreed.
Because I'm not, uh, I'm curious, I, what I'm wondering is how that drives a, a firm to bid.
Yeah.
How does that inform a, a, a bid for a search firm versus the candidate we want?
Because they're going to be finding the candidate that we want. They're such, they're, they, that's who they're going to be searching for. So who are their contacts? Who are, who are, who are, where do they look?
I think it's.
How do they look?
Okay, to take it out, because under the proposal, we do have the E I expertise specifically called out as something that they need to put forward to us. So if they read the whole proposal, they should be giving us that.
I agree. I, I think it just comes back to them making the case to us in this way.
Yeah.
Okay. I do want to keep that for the.
Yeah, the search and that's. Yeah.
Yeah.
I, yeah, completely.
I have another question. Do we want library governance and ideal candidate to be in the R A?
Well, I think.
I want, I, I'll refer this. Yeah, do, do we want? This is my customer, I'm kicking it, like. It's already been a whole page of words. So, do we feel like we want to add that, or do we feel like? The search firm doing the research on. Um, I don't want to go in exactly.
Right?
Yeah, yeah, I answered my own question.
I mean, I was happy to explain my thought models.
No, I'm bringing that there, just not, not quite as quickly.
There was the deletion of the second half of twenty twenty-three. Suzanne's comment was about. Uh, navigating where we are currently with that. I mean, I think that that's not necessarily.
And then there's a paragraph that I added, and I, you know, again, I, I don't know if I have all the words.
Sorry. I, I'm sorry, I'm just a little bit lost about where, what we're, uh, where we are in the conversation. Right now, where, uh, in the document are we, what are we talking about?
We were just.
It was not supposed to be a trick question.
No, 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 I, I.
I'm not sure.
Paragraph.
Like we had just, uh, in the paragraph that starts with O P P L strategically prioritizes. We have, we're just completing that, and then. Then the next paragraph is about our three branches and our budget and our staff. I think that all makes sense.
I, I actually. I, I'm sorry, that was the, that, I thought that's where we were. I actually have a, have a comment, which again, the people who have. Are working on printouts may not see, which is that it seems to me that we're talking about strategic priorities. In the paragraph before the description of the branches. Then in the paragraph after, we're again talking about strategic pri- priorities, so the, the description of the number of branches seems to come out of. A little bit nowhere.
So maybe that should be moved, I mean.
Yeah, just move it. Yeah, I would, I would move it to the.
Yeah.
So Maya, are you driving or are we all driving?
All right.
I'm just checking. I'm okay, I just. I know you're reading too.
I just finished.
I actually don't just like delete at this point.
Yeah, I think that one can be deleted.
Yeah.
Now it's just that.
There will be a delay unfortunately. I mean, alternatively is what I could do is I could get on Zoom and then I could throw it up on the screen together.
That is a good idea, actually.
It will be one doc, it will be one, we'll, we'll, you'll see what I'm typing.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, and then just, that would be awesome. Because I don't know why it's so hard on Google Docs to see what page you're on, like there's no.
Yeah. And I will say, when I redline, I usually go like. On camera, you guys know, I have grammar, my force spelling.
I'm just trying to follow your cursor, but then I lose you, and I'm like, where'd she go?
No, no, no. Okay, join Zoom. Launch meeting.
And thanks, Maya, for all your work on this, like, for doing so many of these edits and. Supporting it tonight, too.
Appreciate it.
Join. This meeting is. Uh, it's not. Allow. Got it. Hold on, ready to turn off audio? I think I turned, did I turn off audio? No, it says join audio, I don't want the audio. All right, share screen. Window. You're gonna get, it's gonna get in the warm moments. I actually have Chrome tab. Yeah, Bill, yeah, there it is. There it is. All right, so for the people watching at home, you have options and you can take a look. Um, okay, so then we have. Oops, kind of driving us. Can I just go and delete the paragraph we talked about? Real quick, instead of just bracketing it, because I think we're, we're taking the red line, we're making it permanent, unless anyone disagrees.
I support that. Theoretically, we're voting on this tonight, right? So I think I'm, I'm okay with like, as we go, kind of accepting changes. But I, I don't want to make anybody, you also have the whole, um, log of edits. Like, you can, we can always check that if there is a concern.
Yeah, I, I, this is what I was like, I went through and flipped a bunch of accepting those two small grammatical things that Suzanne flagged. With the double space and stuff like that, I just, to kind of clear up the list of. Things that we need to sort through. So.
Okay, and then we have an order to support. Strategic priorities.
Oh, not people in the way, sorry, I'll fix that. I missed writing, that's how it was coming. And seriously, any input I bottomed, I was just putting it out there. So.
Uh, just maybe it's a little, like, instead of this helps make progress, it could be this helped advance.
Yeah.
Let's have a. Balance. Uh, equity, papers. I'm not put in particular, that's.
Yeah, I didn't give myself to come back again, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was, I was looking at those words too.
I, I, I think we have agreement.
I think I know your, I think I know where you may have been trying to go, but I'm not. Sure that. Top of the phrase and. And help unify staff.
Branches. That weren't there. And help to unify staff, how about? Now, I mean, and how, no, instead of help and, and unify staff.
I don't even know if we need, I don't even know if we need, like, I think. Well, I guess, I don't know. I don't even know, how about just done help stuff?
Support staff.
And support.
Okay.
Okay. I just figure if somebody's getting into the search processes, they have an idea.
And that can be part, and that can be through our discussions. With them too.
Okay.
As, as we look at support staff, we might even have to say heal staff.
No, not for the R, I think, I think that, that.
I'm sorry, that was, that, that was a little snarky, I apologize.
That's okay.
Um, Ted, if you want snarky, how about the fact that we have volunteer elected officials? Like, I don't think we can have, uh, forced elected officials, can we? I, was this, like, we just want to remind people?
I actually think it's an important piece because. We are elected, unlike the village trustees, we are unpaid. We, this is not our full-time job. And I do think that there's a level of understanding. That needs to go with that. We rely on this firm, like, that's part of why we're issuing this R F P. Is because we are volunteers. I have a sixty-hour a week job. I do an additional, you know, ten hours, whatever, for this library. I do an additional. Ten hours for the other nonprofit board I sit on. I raise my kids and maybe I will occasionally sleep. But one of the reasons why we are issuing this is because I'm probably the typical person here. We are all overstaffed. You know, Christina's about to create a new human and, you know, we're all. In these stressful jobs. And so the fact that we're volunteer does make an issue. And we are elected officials, so that I, we often say unpaid. But.
I was gonna say.
I don't know.
But I understand, because my, my thought was the same, like, we could just put elected officials, we don't have to say volunteer, because.
But a lot of people think we have income from this. We don't. We have to fill out a conflict of interest form, we have to be open about our finances. But we do not get remuneration.
But I obviously, I, I, I obviously agree that that is actually the truth. I just don't know the strategic or rhetorical importance in pointing it out. In the R F P.
I think, I think it sets a, an expectation level of what our ability to participate in this. You know, with the firm will be, is that, you know, while we are, we do have these local offices. It like, to my point, it's like, this is, this is not a thing we get paid for, even though we get volunteered and sign up to, to run for election.
But generally, aren't most elected officials of left municipalities, like, this is not their forty hour, like, I'm thinking about other, you know. It is a part-time job, but a lot of times they're paid.
Like, this is.
In Illinois, libraries are all unpaid, but that speaks to whether or not we have a firm who understands Illinois public libraries. Because in other states, that is not the law, like, it is literally a statute. That we don't get remuneration. There is a statute that says school boards in Illinois get no remuneration for their work. That is not the case in everywhere. I mean, I will say, mostly their states I've lived in, I like, that is not the case.
And this is an important issue because in an R F P, I mean, for instance, you look at the. Trustees in the Chicago Public Library, and they are appointed, they're not elected. So I think that pointing out to, to, uh, pointing out, out to somebody who's going to be a library search firm. That we are volunteers and we are elected, that's important.
Well, I, I. If, if I could, I, I, yes, agreed, elected is important. I, again, I, I would hope that search firms would know. That if it's a, if it's a village, then boards are elected, and if it's a city, then they're appointed. But, uh, by the mayor, but let's say they don't know that we keep in elected. I just don't know, um, the other thing that I might suggest then is if it's important to call out the fact that. Uh, in our capacity of interacting or in our capacity, you know, of interacting, yes, with the search firm. That that capacity is necessarily limited because we're volunteer, that maybe the more appropriate place would be. Um, what I've highlighted and conceivably, I guess, I don't know if somebody, uh, I can't even remember now if it was me that. That, that, uh, cut it out or what, but. Um, oh yeah, because I was just saying, you know, the board is composed, so if you read the sentence, it's, uh, says. The board is composed of seven elected officials. Eager to find a strong leader, willing to listen to us and work with Oak Park's diverse community, O P P L staff. And board, it doesn't make sense that we would both be the subject and object of the verb. So. So I, but, but if we, that might, maybe there's a rewording there that lets us say something about like. Um. You know, uh, composed, we're excited, uh, and, and appreciates that we are a committed. But volunteer group or something that, you know, that.
And board of volunteers, but board of volunteers could also be friends of the. I'm so sorry, my mom knows that. Talk with my mouth full.
Um, we're gonna say, like, are uncompensated or, I don't know, something. I, I get, I get the point, I think it's. And, you know, I think perhaps that's something we, is this maybe something we will, we made clear in a conversation with all the plaintiffs. That we bring up, bring up that point, maybe it's not something we. That we bring up, bring up that point, maybe it's not something we need to include in this particular.
I think it's fine for us to say seven elected officials. Um, and then O P P L staff and board. And then levels that you were talking to and speak to them, who we come power, so if it has a communication.
Yeah.
Like, hey, we're not gonna have you to be elected.
Yeah.
Yeah. These are, I think that's her. Because I think, I think to the, so some of the earlier comments, we don't have, this does not have to include everything.
Yeah. All right. You know, instead of village, Oak Park doesn't make sense. To know. What, we have six governing bodies?
The village of Oak Parks.
Six, yeah. Yeah, the village of Oak Parks. Six.
Under governing bodies.
Six total, right, or is it, so it would be five other or six governing bodies, right?
If we're, if we're on the highlighted section, it, it, doesn't that mainly repeat the first sentence in the paragraph? Could we just added there the, um, you know, the, to find a strong leader willing to listen to and work with. Oak Parks diverse community, O P P L staff, the six taxing bodies. And.
I think there's something elegant about not listing more than three. If you're, if you're saying, hey, this is, this is who has worked with, because they follow the community. And then this is like the layout of. We have to collaborate with. And we can cut community, but I think that's important.
Why don't we just say community staff and Oak Parks.
I, I know, I'm sorry, I don't understand, I don't understand the difference between, I don't understand the difference between work with and collaborate with.
One is collaboration because for, like, in your everyday. Position, you're, you're gonna be working with the board, we are technically your managers. Versus collaborate with. You know, the, the, the village manager, right, that's a different relationship, collaborate with the school district, collaborate and create those partnerships.
I disagree, because I think one of the things we want is a collaborative leader who will collaborate with. Although I do think, I think. My heard is pointing out that the repetition of having one place and then another, and wanting to have it in one place.
Okay.
Um. And I, I think we should never leave out the board, because I think that's essential.
Okay.
I didn't even have a.
Yeah, she rolled us into the six governing bodies.
Oh, yeah, I think.
Bodies comma, including.
I think we need to call ourselves out there, I don't know. But I think that's a board.
Well, how, how does that work for you, Suzanne?
I think that looks good, I'm not Suzanne, but I think it looks good, and I, I, uh, I don't know, I just wanna like. Continue to say, I don't think we need to get in the weeds as much as maybe we are. I think some of this is gonna come out in the rubric and some of this is gonna come out in the job description and those are. Different documents, like, in, in my experience, the RFP is really like, we give the basics, they make the case to us and then we assess them. So I don't think we need to spell everything out for them.
Mm-hmm, right, which is why I was suggesting we just put them all in one instead of having it say it twice. But, um. I think the.
I'm sorry.
Need.
Um, I'm sorry, I, I was being really rude and just trying to sort of make suggestions, uh, while we were talking. But if we want to take the time. To like map out different things, we maybe move the two sentences together and just say also. So now it reads, the board is composed of seven elected officials eager to find a strong leader willing to listen and, listen to and work with. Oak Parks diverse community, O P P L staff and us, the next executive director must also effectively collaborate. Uh, with the Oak Park, with Oak Parks. Six governing bodies, including, again, the O P P L board.
So we declared, and this goes back to, you know, getting to find the details, but we did declare. The O P P L board as the board in the first sentence.
Oh, okay, then great, okay, that's correct.
Okay.
I think we might be a little bit too reactionary with repeating. The collaboration with the board.
I, I, I. Yeah, I'm not sure it's the hill I wanna die on, but I also.
Okay.
And I thought we were gonna collapse them and just have it be. Um, willing to listen to and collaborate with Oak Parks diverse community. O P P L staff. Um.
Oak Parks six.
Of governing bodies.
And Oak Parks. Six. Governing. Bodies comma.
On that point, why do we have six governing bodies and not put the numeral six? And yet we have seven elected officials and we put the numeral seven?
There you go.
Thank you.
I will be honest.
That's the lawyer in you.
No, I like to write it out and then put it in parentheses and I hit myself repeatedly during this not to do it, so I didn't sound too. Too precise and too robotic. All right.
I know it's.
It's shortened, it's sweet.
So one thing I'm noticing is we start in on the ideal candidate in a library governance section. Instead of the ideal candidate section.
Yep, so we can take that last.
The part that starts with the executive director.
Yeah.
Actually, down to the ideal candidate.
I think when I was writing this, I can have the ideal candidate and then I decided we needed it and then I.
Yeah, gotcha.
So just, you'll just go down then?
That's what I'm doing right now. And I'm just gonna throw it here, it's not, I'm gonna throw it down after the bit about. The masters in library sciences, but I think it should be library information science, it's an M L I S or M L S.
M L I S.
I am so. Oh, it's M L S. It's not M L I S.
M L I S.
So masters in library information science.
You know, we have.
And that's actually true, true in most schools, but not all, but.
Okay, so that's actually why I put a current degree. We can, and I can, I can cut this such as a PhD.
Yes.
Uh, I asked, okay, so the, what is the I?
M L I S is relatively recent.
Library sciences, and that's.
And there's also the M S L S.
Okay, then let's leave the or equivalent, but I'll cut this such as a PhD.
Yeah.
Okay, masters in library. Information, wait, library science and information or equivalent degree.
Which is the most common one?
It's the current, the current phrasing is master in library and information science.
I, I would be hesitant to hire someone who didn't have an M. That's what we're, we're just.
Yeah.
M L S and M S L S.
That's, that's just because to capture the masters in library science last, masters in information science, because technically. And when you graduate.
Yes, that's what I was gonna say, when I was graduating, it can. Yeah, because I think that's the only reason we're putting or. Not of the ones that's in like. PhD and archaeology.
Yeah, right. Okay, so. I just threw down the sentence, I think, did I do that? Yeah, okay.
It should be two sentences, it's very challenging.
I just, no, this is the sentence that was from the last paragraph of the governance. I just threw it down underneath and we'll figure out where we put it.
I understand, but wasn't it two sentences from?
Yeah.
It is, it's still.
It is two sentences, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, now let's go back.
So then we can delete the other.
Okay.
I'm having to hold myself back, sorry.
Uh, Oak Park Public Library is a driven, hardworking and deeply talented diverse staff. And the ideal candidate must be equal to the task of guiding them, of guiding. Okay, so we already have immensely talented staff, I don't know what we're doing in this, um, of guiding.
The staff.
Guiding and supporting. Them. Period.
Yeah.
But you got rid of the rest.
Yeah. I can put it back. But I thought this sounded a little bit more to the point.
Yeah, what we're looking for in RFP.
Yeah, exactly.
I think those other pieces can be part of the description.
Do you have one for that, you say anything for that?
Um, we have it, we have.
And then Maya, it is masters in library and informational science.
Oh, informational science, okay. Masters in.
I think it depends on where you're looking at Dominican, it's just information, it's just library and information science. And this is one of the, the things I have recently learned about. Uh, in, in trying to do some stuff with some community colleges. It can be the same thing, but they're gonna call it different names, so.
Well, that's why we have the or equivalent degree, but I think for an RFP, we have to at least say. M L I S rather than M L S I.
Yes.
Okay, masters in information, in library.
And information science.
Thank you.
No worries, thanks Ted.
Should we put M L I S in parentheses so that when we use it later?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, so then we have paragraph one, paragraph two we haven't touched, I see a lot of people in it. Um. First sentence, do you have any changes?
The first sentence under the ideal candidate?
Uh, first sentence, second paragraph, is there a way to just add paragraph numbers real quick and how like? Completely read.
No, we're looking, I think that's just a legal ring looking for us.
I know, it, it kills me to do a document in, uh, in, hopefully. I'm just, I'm just a Microsoft. All right, um. So I think the first sentence is okay, an ideal candidate must also. Demonstrate commitment to. By obtaining and maintaining, you know, I, I don't know if that's something that people wanted. It seemed like something that was a fiscal.
I think we can just say fiscal operations, because I think.
Yeah.
Moving forward, some of the grant pieces will probably. They will obviously be in the director's purview, but maybe not a direct responsibility. And I don't think the, the first thing on the list.
Okay.
Yeah, I think financial operations is.
And then broad. Okay, so let's just delete the rest of that. Okay. Um, we're, okay, the ideal candidate that must be able. And willing to respond to questions and feedback throughout the year, providing programmatic fiscal and other issues as they arise. I also don't think that's necessarily, well, let's cut it.
Yeah.
Um. Well.
Well, is this, is this a job description or an RFP? Statement, I think, that's, that's a good question, we came with it.
I think we're adding the assumption that.
It's letting them know what they're, what we want and what we're, what we need, but. How much? Do you need to stay at in the RFP?
Can we say something along the lines of, uh, able and willing to be in regular and clear communication with the board? That, that encompasses a lot of things, I, I think it's just.
The bar, can I put the bar and stuff?
Christina, if you have any thoughts on that, please.
I'm sorry.
I'm just asking Christina.
I wasn't, I haven't been looking off of the screen, because I've just been looking at.
What did I, did, is that kind of based on that comment I had earlier or no? Because I know, I think that was in the process part that I was bringing up, the, no, no, because that's for communication with the, never mind, no, I'm okay with what I. I just keep going back to like, I don't, I think that this is nice to have, I don't, I just think. We're getting in the weeds a bit, so I'm being quiet, but I think when it gets to process, I'll have more to say.
Like, yeah, I think a lot of these we can truncate and keep.
Yeah.
Pretty high level.
Okay. Um, then I think we should actually cut this last bit and we should just leave it as. Um. And we should leave it as the, and, and we, I, I would cut all of this. We, I don't know.
I like the, no, the, the last part of the last paragraph I left, but I think this, the, I mean, the second last paragraph, but the, um, that I like.
That you like, okay.
Um, and then we just. The last, and go.
Yeah, and that was, that was already been cut once, it will be cut twice. Okay. Oh, I meant to delete that. All right, oh, did you, oh, you added search term?
In the, in the.
I added that in both of those, just for clarity when I was reading it.
Oh, okay.
But if it's not, um.
I, I.
I know what your sponge.
Yeah.
Um, so one of the other place.
Yeah.
I think we're, I think we can keep it, keep it in the scope and, and just have it respondant.
Okay. Yeah, isn't that how we labeled them in the first paragraph?
It is.
It has been.
Qualified vendors is responded.
I can also redeclare it as search term, but, yeah.
I also added, um, establishing appropriate methods for community input, because we had in here about staff input, we did a big thing about community input.
And other relevant documents, obtaining. So you want centering input? From Oak Parks leadership team?
That wasn't me.
That was, that was me.
Centering versus.
Yeah, I do.
Okay, what does centering mean for you?
I'm not sure, I, I agree, I don't know that that's, I, I don't know, I mean, centering staff is one thing, I don't know if we mean. I don't know, I, I.
Actually, how about if we just do it similar to what establishing appropriate? Methods for, um, input from O P P L's leadership team. So it's the same language.
Yeah.
Establishing did feel.
Yeah, all right, yeah, I was, it was not establishing.
Appropriate methods for. Input from.
Appropriate. Methods for input from. And other. As well as, what was the word after the second appropriate, does that just mean, meaning to go to that?
Get rid of as appropriate, because we put appropriate already.
Yes, that's why I was. Yes, that's why I was.
We are, we are all quiet and just reading through the language, in case anybody was worried about a connection problem. I just realized we all got very quiet.
Well, you're reading brilliant, I mean. I'm sorry.
So in, in scope of work, we have reviewing all applicants and if applicable, conducting additional review and offering guidance. On applicants, um.
Why do we have review ending instead of review, I'm just wondering.
To keep the gerund consistent.
But they all didn't have that, and then they all have it now, just wondering.
Around, around midnight, I thought it sounded better to have the gerund. But I can change that, um, we'll partner, well, okay, so the success force partner with. Will partner with as well as guide the board as follows. Reviewing and updating these executive directors' job description relevant documents. Establishing appropriate methods for soliciting input from O P P's. Leadership team and other staff members, establishing appropriate methods for community input, developing. So it's, I thought that made more sense versus saying as follows, review and update. I, I really don't care.
Yeah.
Those two are my new favorites because they agree with me. You, my silence is halfway, it's okay.
The math major is not going to get into gerunds, just.
But the communications, uh, professional, I feel like, uh, this is not a contract, it, it sounds boring.
So, okay.
In my head, Suzanne, you are, um, speaking in like a bad Mike Myers Scott accent. Like saying, crap, this is all crap, gang, do it, crap.
So. Developing a recruitment strategy, process and timeline with the board, which should include key decision points for the board. Uh like making sure that that is specified.
Yeah.
Identifying, recommending and recruiting a diverse candidate pool. Implementing a screening process and identifying candidates that match the needs of the library and Oak Park community.
Actually, it should be O P, I'm sorry about that news.
It's okay.
Someone explained the reviewing all of the next four points. If appropriate, conducting additional review.
It actually, I thought it was, I think it was, alright, when I wrote that in my mind, and I don't know if someone's changed it. It was about reference tracks, oh yeah, I did put reference tracks.
That's later.
I don't know, isn't it?
It's not right there.
Reviewing all applicants and if applicable, conducting additional review and offering guidance on applicants.
Oh, guidance to the board on applicants.
So what's the additional review piece? Like little dissonal investigation, oh, I have a friend who works at X library and they know this person. Like maybe, you know, a little creative reference chatting.
That's common. So kind of a lot of director searches, what? The firm will do is go say, oh, you applied, let's have a conversation. Okay, I've been to a couple of director searches before, speaking of that, but like. You know, they'll just be like, what are your interests, and they'll just have like an informal conversation, so they'll kind of get to know the candidate a little bit more. After you submit your initial application, so to me, that's how I read it as.
Yeah.
You know, you get your pool.
That level of call people.
Opening. You're just like having a conversation, like where you were in your career, like what do you wanna do?
Okay, I read it as, we have your resume. We think you can do better, we write it.
No, no, cause I, like, I, I don't know if you've worked with like a recruiter or ever talked to recruiters about it, but there's like. Sometimes there's an element of like matchmaking involved, and that's what I'm talking about. It's like there could be somebody who's on paper, just picture perfect, and then you pick them up, you talk to them on the phone, and they're like.
No.
Yeah, no, like they will not fit into this community, they will not get along with having to manage. You know, uh, six other governing boards and collaborate with them, it's a lot of that like soft skill.
Assessment.
Assessment.
I think where we went off on this is, I think because Monterima changed it from applicants to applications, so I think that's where you're reviewing.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't like the idea of reviewing people, if we could just like.
I'm the outlier.
Wait, I think we understand.
Let's listen to Monterima.
Okay, yeah.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to say that, uh, my, um, I just, I don't think that it should be applicants. I don't think we should review applicants, I think we should review applications, you know, make, make it the.
They would be reviewing the, um. So what if we change it instead of review all, so instead of reviewing, it would be screening? And assessing.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, all candidates, see, I'm starting to understand your brain.
Um, I don't think my husband has understood my brain, so like.
Well, Chris can get a little jealous of me.
Okay, alright, well, you, you could, you know, it's one of the mysteries, so.
Alright, screening and assessing all candidates and if appropriate, conducting. Additional, instead of review, you, you think scrutiny?
No, no, it's not a good.
Scrutiny, because like, honestly, if, if.
I love the word scrutiny, guys.
It's very negative. Say, I have a really negative.
This is not a legal document.
Alright, alright.
If, additional engagement? I don't know, I, I feel like I'm, I'm just like grabbing awards here.
I mean, I've communicated with half of my team via emoji today, so if the people who work in libraries understood it the way it was meant to be understood. Then maybe this is one of the litmus tests of the RFP, that if you're interpreting this the way we want it to be interpreted. As it is generally interpreted by.
It should definitely be screenings and assessing.
No, you don't, okay, so then we will, I will change that. So then what should it be?
It should be screening and assessing.
Wow, thank you. I didn't even know I could do that, thank you. And if appropriate, conducting additional review and offering. Is it contacts or is it guidance?
Um.
I would.
Guidance.
I would, but I, I just.
Actually as guidance, or I would say advice.
No, cause, no, yeah, I, I, let's hit with guidance.
I like guidance. I didn't, I, I took out the, the top five to ten candidates because.
Who knows?
Yeah.
Kind of should be the top candidates.
Yeah, should be. Thank you, I overcut.
And rewind candidate profiles, we check.
Mm-hmm.
You may remember at the last, at the last, uh, selection, we were offered only four, and some of them were real duds.
Yeah.
Um, providing training for the board and staff participating in the selection process, sorry about that, guys. Selection process, um, I do think Ted, you had touched upon the desire to have staff and leadership. Well, leadership, but also just staff involved in the selection process, so, um.
Yeah.
Is that enough? Is that good?
I, I think yes, it is.
Okay.
Good.
Team.
Yeah. I like that, that's the, that's one of supporting the interview process.
Yeah.
And I also like the next one of until acceptance of the, of a candidate.
Um, and then instead of weekly, I think we should change it to as appropriate. And I realize.
Make it regular.
Regular.
Yeah, I don't want somebody else to be knowing what's appropriate.
Mm-hmm. Regular, communicating regularly.
Regular updates.
Oh, breakdown, communicating. Regular updates to the full board.
Well, this is the thing where, uh, the reason I printed out that one's, and I, uh, you know, it'll come up later, but it's significant here because they actually put it here. Um, is they have a breakdown of like interview, um, teams.
Yeah.
And team members and components, no?
I thought that was really.
I would love it if we could have something like that, but we would like. Um, absolute work.
Maya, we need to capitalize board there on full board.
Yes, we do.
I like the idea, but I don't. I have a combination about putting something set in stone in the RFP. In case we self-select out from somebody who has another process that might also.
I know, I like the idea, I like. Really, I felt like put something about asking them to provide the timeline, did I not? Uh, I did, you.
Is it in that proposal comments?
Oh, it is. Thank you.
It's, it's also in scope of work, uh, developing a recruitment strategy and process and timeline, but.
Oh.
Okay.
That fourth, that fourth bullet point, um, kind of said a red herring to me. About the fact that we had a problem with the most recent search.
I, I don't think that's gonna be a secret, Ted.
And what, what do you mean, developing a recruitment strategy, process and timeline with the board, that's the one you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about if, if, if we don't like the person who comes next, um, then you do a search for free.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that too.
Yeah, I think that's the, that's been the, that was in all of the proposals that we reviewed. Uh, last time was that if there was a, a problem within one year. They would re, they would reconduct the search at no additional cost, that was in all of the proposals last time and.
It's evidence too.
And that can be.
That, that would, that would really, really scare me if I were putting forward a proposal because I'd go, oh. I mean, I understand why we're doing that, but it's just like, okay, you've. I, I just don't like it, it being in there.
Is, is it something we had the last time, or is it something that we just received from them?
I felt that that was. I think we could take it out of the RFP and then if necessary, put it in the actual contract.
Yes, it can be the contract.
I think, cause it sounds like, it sounds like we didn't have it last time, but then people, like proposals included it. So I, I would think that's just another way of ranking them.
Hmm.
I'm not too worried about, I mean, people do know that the search was not the best last time, and so I think to Matt's point, like, that's not a secret, I. If this is a typical.
I don't think it was in the RFP last time, it was something that came up once we started looking at contracts, so.
Yeah.
I see what you were thinking.
I, I think that both Christina and I don't really like it in there, cause it's just, it.
That's fine, I'm fine with pulling it out of the, of the, the, section three, bullet point four. I'm, I'm fine with that coming out, cause it'll be, it'll be an issue that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and maybe we can just make a note that it will be something that we like consider for the rubric or consider for the finance aspect of it. Cause I, I think it's a worthy point, but I, I agree that it probably doesn't belong here.
Yeah, I mean, I put that there, cause when I see term of contract, then I'm like, okay, I won. Oh, that's illegal, but that's illegal.
There you go.
Yeah.
But see, this is why we're not a communications person, remind me, I need to not be so harsh.
I think the wrong thing got taken.
It took out the, the link.
It was the last.
I think we can be harsh in the rubrics, right, it's just for this, we don't wanna, we don't wanna cut people out too early or, um, scare people away to Ted's point.
Yeah, okay.
Rubric in the document, you can go to town, Maya. Christina, I'll go to town, the rubric.
I love a rubric, I will be, I, I know I'm gonna be like taking a pause, but I'm gonna find myself editing it, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
That's excellent. You're good at it.
Uh, so now into proposal contents. Cover letters, executive summary, description of organization, team members and qualifications. And your resumes and C, C V's, um, description of firms' backgrounds, qualifications and years of experience. Description of approach to the work. The E I expertise or experience related to the firm's fighters, please be specific. Uh, primary point of contact. Yeah, the evidence of experience working with similar organizations or governmental bodies. Um, cost, fees and terms.
Do we have the cost or budget?
In terms of what we're to use for?
Cost.
Yeah.
Where, where the budget side there?
Where the budget and the cost.
Yeah. And references at least three. And if we want, and I was gonna say this, like, do we wanna specify at least three that have, they've worked with, you know, in a certain timeframe? Cause I will say, like, looking back at some of the proposals we got last time, I know one of the, uh, the firms listed someone who. Like listed a whole bunch of libraries and, and one of them was Maywood, and I talked to my friend who's on the board and said. I don't, we, we haven't worked, if they worked with this, with the library, it's been a while.
Okay, so how long?
So at least ten years.
Three, one must be within the last year. The others.
Matt, that, this leads me to ask you a question that I hope is not too personal, but, um, you found out recently. That, um, when we were talking about our former executive director, that you reached out. Okay, sorry.
Do we want them all from the last five years, because we're also asking for a fair bit of specificity related to. Governing bodies and that might not be what we do on a regular basis.
But I guess my concern is if. If what they really, if it was really their wheelhouse. Like ten years ago, the world's a very different place.
That's what I'm saying, like, can we just say that all of them are in the last five years?
Yeah, oh, you want all of them in the last, instead of like one in the last three and the rest, I, I'm just trying to.
Yeah.
I like one too.
Yeah.
Me too.
Like three. All within. Five years?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, another thing we could do is we could also say, and I, I, I used to do this all the time, is I would say. We want at least one other library, or we want at least one other govern, governing body, or at least one other public library. Again, if they're trying to sell to us, we, we need to see it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was gonna say, I mean, I think that's the ideal and that can be on the rubric as a grade, like as, as we assess them, but I don't think. I just don't wanna make our pool smaller, I, I wanna see what we get.
Completely fair.
Uh.
And we don't wanna make the pool smaller just by looking at the document and it being just too. Too big, too, too much, to, you know. How much time do people want to put in before they get into the next step?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, so much.
So would the search, would the search firm then, uh, look out for these references, or do those references come from the candidate?
These are references of the search firm about their work.
Okay, thanks.
The, the, yeah, this is not the, how we're gonna do, uh, the, the E D search yet, this is, this is references for their work.
Okay, that, that answers my question, thank you.
Thank you.
And for, um, so. I have put in your interview, you know, to have the interview teams and the search timeline, but we've decided to not do the team, you know, to come to that later, so we can take the.
So we can take those, those two out. Um, and pull that back. But I do think that selection process should be, um, evaluation criteria and then selection process separate, cause they're kind of two separate things. Um. So, um. Like the evaluation criteria is what we're gonna be deciding on, that selection process is just basically the, you know, what, what it's gonna look like.
And I, I do agree that first bullet.
I didn't hear it originally.
Oh, that the first bullet, though, who the key contacts from your firm will be and how their backgrounds will advance the search process.
Yeah.
I think that can come out. We're already asking, yeah, I think we're already asking for CDs. We're already asking for the firm's DEI experience.
Hmm.
I think that's duplicative.
So just cut the full thing?
Yeah, let's take it. I added the second part, cause I didn't like the first part, but I'm okay. It was just getting rid of the whole thing.
That's fine.
I'll be honest, this is where I stopped, because I thought that this is gonna be the meat of our discussion, which is the simple response.
So the, so, okay, so this is, this is our criteria for consideration, um. The needs.
It couldn't just be completeness and quality of response. I don't think we need to. Get into that voice of pure.
Is it an interview with the full? I, I think this is kind of where we've talked about, wouldn't it first be a conversation with the committee and then. They would bring to the full board, like a final interview? Is that what I heard earlier? Cause that last bullet might just wanna be spelled out then if it's, if not everyone is being interviewed, uh, we might just wanna say that.
Yeah, I think that last bullet point would, is more of the process, that Suzanne's point of like, the, like these bullet points, I think we wanted, like, identify these as like. Part of the evaluation criteria and the. And then that, that, that last part will be part of the process.
Yeah, no, the first part is evaluation and the second one is.
Yeah, this is, uh. Evaluation criteria.
Yeah.
Good distinction.
And then we can put those other bullet points under the selection process here.
And the selection process will include.
Uh, that, that should have our dates.
Yeah.
We, the proposals will be accepted in this, this day, you know, and also include, what, what are two weeks for questions being.
Yeah. Yes.
So that includes the dates right there.
Yeah.
I think. That was in the last round of minutes where we kind of had.
Yeah, I, I put them up on the fir, on the first page of.
Oh, my God. So.
Uh, that, that question period. Yeah, you know, a question period, it concludes Friday, April twenty sixth at five PM. Uh, responses would be due.
Yeah.
The May tenth gives us two weeks of submissions after questions made.
Is that the type of in there now? He's saying them or?
Oh, sure.
I'm just wondering.
I was just cutting it in case you're right now.
I think, I think it was just a question of, did we wanna give people if two weeks or three weeks after question time? If we do two weeks, it's May tenth. If we do three weeks, it's May seventeenth.
Well, we had a set time limit that we established before, didn't we?
Well, I, I think that there was a discussion about whether we wanted.
To do two.
Two weeks versus three weeks for that final submission period. In all, it's either a total of four weeks or five weeks of people having a chance to respond. Um.
Can we work our way backwards? So our meeting in May would be on the twenty eighth unless we move it.
Let's say we don't talk about adding some dates to the meeting that you were here for.
Yeah.
Well, cause also the twenty eighth is memorial to, it's, it's not like the actual memorial.
Let's figure out when our meeting is, cause I think we would all like at least a week to look over whatever we need to look over.
Yes.
So that we can, so if we're gonna meet on the twenty first, maybe we call it the tenth, so that we have the thirteenth through the seventeenth to make a decision. So we can come in, vote, talk on the twenty first.
Or do we wanna meet on the twenty first?
Right, that was what the discussion was last time. Matt offered two dates to everybody and I think people were supposed to share their availability. So I think it was the twenty ninth or the thirtieth, I thought was the two dates we were thinking about changing that meeting to.
Okay, so then we would, we would have time between the seventeenth. And we have the twentieth through the twenty fourth.
But I think to the, to, I think it's also worth noting that, uh, sorry Ted, I'll get, I'll let you go in just a second, is like, even if you go with the tenth, it is still four total weeks. That the RFP in some format is substantially available for people to review and prepare.
I just wanted to make sure whatever we're choosing, we're choosing in a way that we can make a decision the next time.
I agree.
Okay.
Ted?
I guess, um, I just have a general question. Um, nowhere in this RFP, do we talk about any coordination with the. American Library Association or the Public Library Association? Should that be something that the firm should be working with?
No.
Okay.
No, I mean, they're gonna, they're, they're gonna post where they, where the job, the jobs are posted and that they'll, you know, they should know that, you know, that could be. I expect that as part of their proposal, saying where they're gonna post the job description.
Yeah.
Um, if they don't go to work to post it with those groups.
Yeah, well, I'll certainly be, I'll certainly be looking for in the RFP, whether or not they're talking to those professional organizations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Thanks.
So, um. So in the. We'll listen to that.
That was in the wrong place, sorry.
Yeah. So selection process, there will be. Um.
Through the two weeks from.
Concluding, a, a, a question period concluding Friday, April twenty sixth.
I'm sorry, I'm done. I just read them in the wrong spot, I'm sorry. You're fine, I grabbed some more, guys.
I'm gonna see that.
Thank you.
That would be possible.
Thank you.
So do we want two weeks of submission time after questions or three?
Do we think that's fine?
I feel like two weeks is a minimum. Um, I don't want. I don't want to miss out on candidates and search firms because of a shorter time period, but I will also say this is not. A super long and involved response, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I.
And they most.
I've worked on ones that are like many hundred.
And at this stage, most of them have them prepared.
Yeah.
And then the next stage, then the next step, and that's where we need to be, um.
I would prefer us having a little bit more time to review and consider and, and coordinate with.
Yeah.
Someone to attend virtually or in person or May meeting.
Yeah.
So I'd say let's go with May tenth as, as the deadline, Friday, May tenth at five PM.
So you anticipate this being part of the regular scheduled May meeting?
Yeah, I think so. I think we may, you know, hunt on, you know, anything not, not essential.
Okay.
And, and have this be the meeting. That makes sense.
And it's five PM typical, or is it usually?
Close of business.
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah.
I, you know, the, the, the staff doesn't need to be chucking, we don't need to be chucking timestamps to the minute for that, you know.
The, so what, how do we work that? The final, um, the.
Uh, for proposals, uh, are due to be submitted no later than five PM. On Saturday.
Yes, yeah.
Sure.
Whoa, what happened there?
I think, I think you were getting shipped out of you of those.
You know what it is? Microsoft loves to come in to Google Docs and are like, this is not working for us. We're gonna master one.
Okay. Remove it, okay. And then, um.
Um, uh, in evaluation committee, completed proposals. That will be reviewed. Uh, by an evaluation committee. Um, there's a date to be determined following May tenth.
Yeah, what we could do is we could post, um. For, uh, after we get. The proposals, because if we have like. Two, it's gonna be a shorter review. God, I hope we don't, we have more than that. Versus if we have like a dozen and that there are thick proposals and whatnot, so we can, we can agree to post. A schedule after we have the close.
Yeah.
And Matt, do we want to say an evaluation committee or the evaluation committee? Because we haven't really determined whether it's going to be the three board members or.
The evaluation committee, the, the, the evaluation committee will be three board members.
Cause this is just the evaluation for the RFP, Ted. This isn't the.
Search firm.
Right, right. Okay.
So we're gonna engage staff for the actual candidate, but this is just for the vendor.
So can we put that by the evaluation committee?
One.
I don't know that that dramatically matters in this particular.
Okay.
In this area.
Thanks.
Um. Do we have a date that we do, that they will, that the selected finalists will be with the board?
Um, I think we'll, we can, we can determine if we're gonna meet. Um.
Part of the.
Um.
I think that that could go with, um. You know, following the, um, submission deadline. Uh. The completed proposal reviewed by, you know, about the evaluation committee and evaluation committee.
But this is from their perspective, just selected finalists will be notified by email. And then do we, and will we meet with the board on a particular date or not?
What's it not? Cause we, yeah, what's that?
And then the date to be determined.
A date to be determined, like with the board.
Getting back to the evaluation committee, I believe that last time, we just looked at the RFPs and as a board, as a whole, we decided. How to go forward.
Yes, but I think.
So I think that will be reviewed by the board.
No, I, I, I would re, cause I, I want. Of, I, I want the whole board, I think we want the whole board to engage with a set of finalists. Cause then if we, if we schedule the whole board sometime after May tenth. To meet, to review that, that seven people schedules their board made versus three. And I would prefer to be able to do a full board conversation slash interview. With us, a handful of potential finalists to consider at the main meeting and make a decision at the main meeting. Instead of. Having another special meeting to do the review versus, or have the main meeting be the review. To determine finalists that we then schedule for another date. Having three board members being able to sit down and go over this and make a recommendation. To the rest of us. We are, we are trusting our, our colleagues to do that review process. And it's also easier for them to schedule a time to meet, to do that. Three versus seven is just gonna be a lot easier.
I, I guess, I, I, I disagree. I think that once we get, the, once we get the proposals. I think that as a, a committee of the whole, we should look at which proposal, that, when the RFPs come in, which firm we want to go with.
Ted, Ted, I, um, we know a couple things. One is that the three people who will meet will be meeting in open meeting. Um, and so if you or anybody who's not on that committee wants to participate in, wants to see that process, then we can.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. And so it's just an efficiency thing to keep this moving forward so that we can get our staff. The leadership that they're asking us for. And we can all.
I, I think Suzanne, you're, Suzanne, you're right. I think that, um, all of us, all seven of us will be reviewing all of the proposals. And.
No.
No, so this is. And, and we did have this conversation already at least once. I mean, I think this is where it's like. I thought we came to a decision last time or two times ago that we were having a committee. Um, part of it is that this committee is doing a lot of work. They're gonna actually have to craft the rubric. They're gonna have to actually assess each submission and then they're gonna have to have a conversation about it. So this is not a small lift and I think for seven people, that's very impractical on this timeline. So I, I think we need to focus on moving forward, cause we're doing it again where we're going back.
Okay, I defer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ted.
Okay.
Okay.
And like I said, you'll be able to, if you are not on the committee, although you expressed interest in.
Ted is, Ted is on the committee.
He expressed interest in the committee, so.
The media has not been sent yet. I'd like, let's get through the RFP.
Whoever's not on it can review.
Yeah.
Whatever the, the subcommittee does.
But what it will do is that evaluation committee will be on the funnel and hold the top ten, five, four, ten of that.
Yep.
Okay.
Then firms, yes.
Firm, firms.
Yes.
Respondents.
Yes. Okay, so, and then.
Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Ted.
Thank you, Ted.
Um, so the, so we have that. There is a period of two weeks of question period, concluding Friday, April twenty sixth at five PM. Proposals are, are due to be submitted no later than five PM on May tenth. Uh, which is also Friday, um, completed proposal. Proposals will be. Uh, reviewed by evaluation committee, selected, do we want selected or identified finalists? For some reason, identified seems better. In my mind, but I just, I, I'm.
Agreed.
Okay.
Or.
I definitely.
How about just finalists?
Yeah.
That works.
That works.
Editing is, is the hard part, um. Finalists will be notified by email and will meet with the board at a date to be determined. Proposal submissions, de, deliver all proposal submissions like trial, likely in PDF format to, we will. Um, we'll identify staff will create an email address. Uh, we'll ask the staff to create an email address for that, um. RFP at oppl.org or something.
It's important that it be identified as a separate RFP, because you probably get RFPs for other things.
I think it's.
Usually the, they sort of, assets usually are.
Like, would you use this later? Oh, I don't know. We could. Um. And would you rather RFPs, like a lot of questions?
I was gonna say, are you gonna use it later if it gets created or?
Well, it's not ideal to create email addresses.
I know, but I don't want an email address floating out in the ether that we're never gonna.
We do, cause we just created them.
Oh, you're just gonna leak it.
Okay.
Yeah.
We drafted, we drafted.
Opl.
Have it going to us, but then when the new person comes.
No, it's, it's literally common.
Yeah.
Um, my question though is, is it important to have it separate than just RFP, uh, because we, do you distinguish it? Or does it matter? Do you want it to be just RFP?
I think it's whatever you guys want it to be. I don't think, I think if you put in here.
Is it the only one we, is it the only RFP we're doing right now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so it's not gonna get.
It's the only RFP.
We are not, we are, we did finish one for the workshop, but that's closed.
Right. I think that's a, that's a good question.
That is.
To me, but I think we just, uh. Yeah. But it's the only thing we're running with right now. Okay. Um.
Wait, why is it two of those requests?
We're covering one staff.
I, I just threw it out there, just like, those are options, like they're, they're just whatever works. Do you hear?
We'll have staff.
For proposals.
I don't want to get that though, so aren't we trying to finalize this? Yeah, that though, so are we trying to finalize this?
Okay, you're right.
Let's just make a decision, RFP.
RFP, yeah, I just had RFP and that's. Let's do that. And I can. Someone has said alphabet soup, so that's why I need to sure.
As somebody who's part of the LGBTQIA plus community, that's not alphabet soup, that's three letters.
Just want to.
There are so many. Do you want for the hard copy it to be like our names or? What was the question?
For hard copy, do we wanna, how do we have?
Do you wanna accept a? Oh, so and they, Evan Stenland, they just said.
Only digital?
There's this LIGO Director search. You can go fancy if you guys want it.
I I I would like to be efficient with our digital resources and add something that we can use in the future. I'm fine with it only being allowing, with only providing for digital submissions.
I feel like if somebody really wants to make some other sort of submission, they will, they will find their way, we can ask them a question, could they? Yeah, we can, I will say. Some people. And I think this is changing, but when I first started doing. And and contract review, like people would get really fancy with their proposals. But it did make for easier reading. Like it was heavy and it was cumbersome to have like a bound or a binder. But it made for like such easy reading and you knew so, and I mean, this is good and bad, you knew very quickly. What proposals were gonna be strong because there were people who literally would send you like. Five hundred pages and it'd be stapled, and then there are other people who would like make it easy to read. And they would like, yeah, and it'd be tabs and there'd be binders and it would be like. Really easy. Nobody shows up with a whole binder. No, but this is not that level, this is not that level.
Sufficient, but what about facts?
I don't know about.
Oh, I wanna, what about, is it hell about, right, art by Lawrence Poe?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with just being with it being electronically submitted.
And our questions done the same way, cause all we have here is proposal submission, but we've got this this question period, so maybe we should.
I think the question, you do go to RFP. As well.
Yeah.
Do we wanna just also like say deliver all proposal submissions electronically in a single PDF? Or something, just so that it's not like a thousand attachments?
So this is a, one of the things that we might want to consider is. Whether or not you want the cost to be evaluated separately than their proposal. I'm just gonna throw that out there.
Meaning that they send the cost in a separate document from the proposal.
And then we evaluate the cost in the proposal separately or we evaluate it. There are pros and cons of both. And um, I just wanna throw that out there, it's not going to, you know, cause too much um, pain for anyone. If you, I mean, the problem is, is if you really love a proposal and you find out it's like. Five thousand dollars above everyone else, that's going to, you know. You might have done a bunch of work, like these are the top candidates, they're also the most expensive.
I mean, I think it's something that we haven't taken into account while we're looking at.
Yeah, well, if you look at it, yeah, you look at it both, but it's just whether or not you want that to be one. To concede this point that we look together, that we look at, or the the E C looks at together. And evaluates. As one or whether or not. Do you do it separately? The other thing is when you evaluate the costs a little separately, you can weigh the cost. A different amount, right, so we could weigh.
But we're not doing. I like this kind of reminds me of like when we were doing the evaluation template. Like how we were gonna do the ED evaluation, I. I think the weight doesn't matter because it's really leading the discussion, like we're not actually putting. Well, at least I think when we talked last month, we were talking about doing a rubric that was more like. So that each individual on the committee could complete it and have like a good. Launch for their discussion, but it wouldn't, it's not like we're gonna say you have to have a minimum of twenty five points and if you don't reach that number, you're not. Gonna qualify for the next round, so I don't, I don't think it matters, but um, I see your point.
Um, I I would actually say that we should have the cost together. We were just, there was um, public comment for this meeting. That talked about. You know, processes that we're undertaking and their costs and this is already a pretty. Broad situation, uh, given that the perception is that we have, you know. That we're taking on a process that was maybe not necessary to begin with or or something, and I think that. I I think it's a, it's. It's a really good idea to be mindful of cost and to be mindful of cost. As part of the whole, whole package.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Right, and Suzanne putting in the. Where to submit questions.
Thank you.
The same email address. And that, so, okay, so we've worked through all of this. Are we with, you know, obviously going through and and approving all of the, you know. Cleaning it up to remove the deleted sections so that like.
So on substance, but not on. Proving and double spaces and such, yeah.
And there's also the element of, do we wanna call a library, do we wanna say Oak Park Public Library?
That all goes through the.
Styloid, I apologize, I'm not, I'm not.
No, we'll be, and yeah, I think, and I think, you know. We, so we have this document that we have worked through with all of our changes. It will need to be, you know, those those items cleared out through the suggestion part process. The style guide review for consistency with with our stuff. Are we set with what we have? Worked through here to get published for, and keep in mind that based off questions that come in during that two week process, we may have. Some some adjustments.
Yeah.
Uh, in that at the last, you know, right at the end that to the, you know, for that final two weeks. Based off this.
Thursday, if we approve today, then the plan would be for it to go out on Monday, yes?
Yes.
And who um, who will be doing? Those questions, they'll come into RFP and then who do they, that's the same, that's.
Yeah, they'll they'll do the first pass of looking at things that would be most appropriate for staff to evaluate and answer. And if there are things that are more in the board. We, they will kick it to us.
So the whole board or to this committee?
That's a good question.
Cause also you wanna make sure that one, if one person responds, it's fine, but. No, no, you can't respond at home.
Yeah.
And really, we can't.
Have three people respond, that's what I think.
Yeah, especially if it's the committee.
I think given that the whole board is. Creating this document, the. The questions would go to the whole board, but we need a point person.
You know what, maybe, yeah, I was gonna say, I think you need to have a point person who answers it and then sends. And then it's just a vote, yes, no, yes, you know what I mean, like really quick, because we gotta keep this moving.
Yeah.
And we don't think you need to vote on a question. Well, I, well, I mean, if anyone objects, like my favorite is like, if anybody objects to these statements, please individually. You know, email me when they're suggested, it's not like a vote, but it's one of those things is like. If somebody, if there's a blaring, did I miss anything in this?
Yeah. I also think it's valuable for us as a board to know.
What's that? It's gonna be published out there, you don't necessarily wanna know about it when it's.
I would want to know what sorts of like questions you're getting and answering, not before you do them, but after.
Sure.
Does that make sense to me? Just so we know what's going on, this is.
So just for timeline purposes, is somebody in this group or online delegate cleaning it up and sending us a? PDF version? Is that something?
I guess I'll I'll.
Something to do with.
I'll I'll go through tonight and 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 finalize the adjustments.
Okay.
Um, in here, uh, and I will send it to you and I would just uh, just make sure. That like perhaps the two of you and Jody look through it to be that for the style guide stuff. You know, I'll I'll go through and replace the U P L with Oak Park Public Library and pull out all of the other track changes stuff.
Okay, yeah, then tell me that.
If the three of you could then.
I just looked at the style.
I T that that now that's a valid, I am saying, but it, we could do that, but.
And that's, yeah, and of course, like you will be, and you'll be empowered to adjust with that address, email address is based on what I T can.
Just change it to alphabet soup.
Um, I just looked in the style guide and it says Oak Park Public Library, first of all, library is a whole organization to all library applications. First reference of the Oak Park Public Library, then the library small L. Not O P P L or the library capital. So I don't know if that's different for for something like this, so maybe just check with Jody. Don't go, we send it out, um, because otherwise we shouldn't change, oh, but you were gonna do it in the night.
Yeah, I was gonna go.
So that should all be the library instead of.
And then.
Yeah.
I don't know when David was here and you guys had the which on one, just lives down the website, what kind of. Promotion that is thinking of this, is it something you'll take on, is it social media, is it?
I think.
If I'm not, but.
No, I. I think we, I think we. We put it up on the website and and I sent it and sent it out to. You know, the the known firms. To do that, I don't know that we need social media on this, it's not a thing, um, is there uh, something with?
He posted on a board.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it's like.
On that physical board somewhere?
No, like available, is there something with like ranks or I L A where people post RFPs? And stuff like that, um, maybe it goes up on LinkedIn.
Yeah.
For. Uh, for the RFPs piece, um.
Another, there's some that we've been referred.
To be.
Yeah.
You know, when she begins to change it, we'll spend some time tomorrow making sure it's cleaned up, um, and the utilities off, but. And then we'll send you the final version before we post it and then, you know, once it's live, we'll send you guys the link.
And then I'll be sending it to like, like we got connected to a specific.
Yes. Do you wanna send like a match of whatever?
I I I think if we, if I don't, I I could go either way on it, I'm I'm comfortable with board members sending the RFP. To um, people that hear about to say, hey, here's this thing, if you wanna put your, if you wanna throw your hat.
Yeah, so if somebody has. Relationship with.
I think.
Then reach out.
You don't think we should like? All have a sense of what's happening with that?
I think.
Maybe we could just have like a running list of like who we have done outreach to. Cause I I mean, there was that document I put together that had some questions that might be helpful, but it also had a list of like three to four firms. So it's like, we should probably start with who we know and we probably don't want four of us reaching out to the same firm, so.
Right.
Yeah, I think, could we just like coordinate a. If if we, on the easy side, we could just do an email thread that's like, hey, I reached out to, well, no, you can't do that, that's.
Oh, who's gonna be on the committee for reviewing this, cause maybe that that's where we've got a point person for, you know, one of those. Is a point person for um. For doing this and for um.
But I don't wanna put too much on that committee though, too, that committee has a lot that we just.
Maybe it shouldn't be that committee, maybe it should be somebody who's not on that committee.
Man, I was gonna suggest, uh, I could create, as I clean this up, I can create a Google Doc page, you know, a a page and we just. People jump in and throw, or it could be a spreadsheet of.
Yeah.
Firm name, email address and who.
Who we contacted.
And who and who contacted.
And who was referred.
Yeah.
Maybe like. Dayton notes too, just in case we hear back or not, if they're doing it, if we can expect their.
Yeah.
It'll go to the.
Email address, yeah.
Oh, true. Well, you never know, if you have a contact, they'll say like, no, this isn't right for us, or yes, there's.
Yeah, there could be a note field for that, so I think, yeah, I can, I'll create that tonight. And I'll conclude the board and Suzie and Lee on that, so that they are also aware of who. Were reaching out and if, um, and if you two have have sent it out to any of the library firms you know of. Um, you can throw that in there as well.
Just a minor thing, Matt, there are, there's no page numbers for this, like when you, when you do the conversion to Word, if you could click the page numbers on. Could not figure out how to do that, yet another thing I don't know how to do in Google Docs.
So I just realized, we we were breaking up evaluation criteria and selection process, I'm not sure we we finalized that. Um, cause I just looked back at. One of those, the comments, I was reminded of one of the comments that I had made where it had had existing ties to or familiar, you know. Or something, familiarity with the Oak Park community and I just changed it to familiarity with the Oak Park community or the characteristics of the Oak Park community. I don't know if that works for everybody, um, I just thought the existing ties to, given our. Current dynamics maybe wasn't the best.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think I think awareness and, you know, and and knowledge of, I think, would be sufficient.
Familiarity with the Oak Park community or the characteristics of the Oak Park community, okay.
I'm comfortable with that. Thank you.
And then did we, did we move everything that we needed to, like, do we leave anything in evaluation?
Well, let's, we had to leave that interview with the board.
Yeah, right?
Yeah. That's part of the process, not the criteria.
Wait, I'm sorry, it's not part of the criteria? When selecting an individual or firm for this project, the board will consider. Not, it won't be the, I mean, it's not, the board will consider. Whatever, the results of the interview or something.
Well, I think.
I I don't know, I I don't know if we wanna say.
Yeah, I I hear, I I see, I I see what you're saying now too, yeah.
The interview with the board. And then down below, let's go.
You have the the interview with the board comma for finalists.
Oh, great. Well, no. Cause that's all gonna be.
Well, we're, well.
Cause we're not gonna, we might, well, we may not.
Well, so we'll do here, I think.
Or as applicable.
Under under criteria says, when selecting an individual or firm for this project, the board will consider. I don't think we need to say for finalists, cause then we're saying that this is gonna be how we pick the one.
Yeah.
So, good, good.
Actually, I. I'm sorry, I I know, I I, uh, but I I think, I I couldn't tell who said. For finalists, was it, was it Maya?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Maya, I agree with you because I think that. This project is big enough or something and it might give the impression that everybody will get a chance to interview. With the board. Um, how about for finalists, comma, and interview with the board or? Yeah. E- either way. No?
Yeah.
Or as applicable, take it applicable.
Interaction with the board, uh.
No, I think interview.
It is an interview.
Yeah, the interview with the board for finalists. I, I think that's.
An interview of finalists, right, and interview of finalists with the board?
What's criteria?
So, I mean, I don't know, it's it's. Is is the, is the specific phrasing that important? I mean, I just, like, I I get it, like, we wanna be clear, but it's at the same time, it's. How much are we?
I'm sorry, you're talking to an English professor, you're.
I know, but.
I think an interview with the board for finalists is not distinct.
So I have as the, because we below talk about finalists will be.
Yeah, I like that.
In fact, um, other than we'll meet with the board, we'll um, be interviewed by the board.
That's a good idea. Thanks. Thanks, Susan. Oh, capital B board, right, end of that, sorry.
Is, we have our.
You're changing. I'm gonna be changing.
Um, okay, I'm, I'm fine with the interview of finalists with the board.
I'm sorry, I cut out for a second, I just meant to add a suggestion, uh, but, you know, uh, for whoever's cleaning up the language to think about later, I, we don't have to. You know, finalize it now, right?
Yeah. Is there a motion to approve the substance of the RFP so that we can go forward on, uh, release on Monday?
Some, some second.
Moved by Virginia, seconded by Maya. Any further discussion? Hearing those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
It is approved, we are moving forward with this, thank you, everyone. All right, uh, next thing, uh, staff survey from proposals. Um, we have two proposals, uh, one from Yardstick. One from Holistic, uh, I, I had, just say, I, I did have a conversation with Jeff Chan of Champ Consulting. Uh, I, based off my conversation with them, they were very much more. Uh, I think if I was a business, I would feel more comfortable working with him as opposed to a library, I think he has a very. Strong performance about the, the framework of his survey. Of, I don't even remember how many questions that are part of a standard bank that he uses in coordination with a national organization. I think it's something like a hundred and twenty and then we would get like fifteen or twenty customized things at the end. Just didn't feel.
Hundred and twenty question.
That were part of the basic bank that all of his clients, and then another fifteen or twenty that we specify. I felt that along with his other approach was just much more corporate oriented and business minded than what we are looking to gather here, so. But, uh, we have our proposals from. Uh, Holistic. Um, and other, uh, you've, you've had some time, um, Christina had some, uh, follow up with the folks at Yardstick. Um, about some of the concerns raised regarding, uh. Oh, can, yeah, can you stop sharing?
Yeah, I was actually just trying to.
Sure.
Stop sharing.
The. The, uh, Christina got some feedback related to the questions about the members of the team that previously had roles with the Playboy Group. Which was a, as they say, a publicly traded entity that owns multiple media, entertainment and consumer good companies. One of which is Playboy, their experience is related to the parent company work, leading global workforces across all of the Playboy Group own businesses. Um, I, I feel like they're. My reaction to that is they're splitting hairs over that, but I think, Christina, do you have any other?
Um, no, I mean, I, I. I asked about their public, uh, sector background as well, so that was a separate email. Cause I thought that was more so the concern rather than their, um, specifically being with Playboy, I, and I. Felt pretty good about their public sector background, um, but I also don't want to. Go forward with somebody that we're not comfortable with, so I don't know, I'm curious to know how others feel, I, I, it doesn't. Really affect my view of them, to be perfectly frank, but, um, I respect that it might affect others.
This is Ted, um, and, um, I am actually at this point opposed to a staff survey. Until we review our revised budget, which we probably will be doing later this month.
Well, Derek.
Can I raise, uh, an alternative? But. It may be. A good search firm will do their homework, take a look at our board meetings, et cetera. Yardstick, I believe, is also a recruiting firm. And some of these do have like that recruiting element. Part of where we are with that survey is as an educational piece with. Finding a new director, understanding the temperature and the staff needs. We could, and I hate, uh, Christina's gonna kill me, but she's separated, um, we could consider. Temporarily. Holding the survey until we hear back on the search firms. To see what their suggested best steps are and having that conversation with the finalists. And seeing if they might have a relationship that they could suggest. But that is putting our eggs in all of one basket.
Yes.
And I don't know if I like that, but I will throw that out there. So you can be waiting to see if somebody comes walking the RFP and says, part of our. Search process or the ED will be what we want to do.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
It might be, but that might be a more expensive search that we might not want.
Hmm.
Yeah, and on that note, you know, as more expensive, you know, search, the other proposal from Holistic. Was three thousand dollars cheaper. And note that also based that, you know, the, from what I looked at, Yardstick was not based out of Chicago. Uh, it's Detroit and the coasts, which wouldn't, you know, their price does not cover travel. It's their price plus travel for their staff, from what I was reading. The advantage of Holistic is the baseline is less money and we would not be paying for travel to Chicago.
They would have remained for some. My question involves them anyway.
But this is about staff.
This is the survey.
If we keep it separate.
If we keep it separate.
Oh, right, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, if we, if.
I'm sorry, I brought in a.
We'll do this right now.
So.
It's late.
Um.
My fault.
Um, let me grab my notes from my conversation with. Um, um.
I think, I, I hear what you said, Maya, I would never, uh, harm you or ever do that, but, um.
I was just, I'm sorry, I hear you, um, because I know that, like, you gotta keep things moving and this is like.
But like, I'm kind of continuously on the fence with the staff survey, I feel like we didn't. I mean, I think the public is right to be frustrated with us on this because we kind of communicated it one way and then pivoted. Um, I think if we did wait until we think about a search firm that is gonna push back the search process longer. But I also think, like, either we need to get better at communicating what this is really meant to do, which I know we've tried, but we might wanna do that right now. Um, or to, maybe, maybe we do discuss, like, is this what we need and what we want right now? I, I don't know, I'm very on the fence, I think. I'm not that worried about budget, I mean, I think Ted, to the other side of things, like, we're also not paying for an ED right now at the full cost, which. We have more wiggle room than we had, um, so I, but I also hear that we have to be fiscally responsible, we have to think about these things, so I. I'm very on the fence about it and I don't mean to bring us backwards, you know, I hate that, but I do think it's worth pointing out, either we need to communicate it better externally, why we're doing this. Or maybe just hold off.
I would, oh, go ahead.
Uh, I, I'd like, I, I would, would like to get, um, feet, you know, some, any thoughts from Lee and Suzie. About their thoughts on the timing of a search, if we should, if they thought it would be best. To kind of move forward with this and get the data sooner or make it more of a, well, well, part of the overall search.
And part of that is that, part of our thinking on this is that as we go forward with our search process, that we want to have a. Really good feel of what's going on with staff and where things are because of all of the people. And so what's the best way to get that and to do that and in a way that is respectful and kind to staff? If that makes sense, but also making sure that we're, we're really hearing. Staff going forward and that we get an ED that, that fits the needs of staff.
I mean, in my mind, I think it's best if you connect the two. If it informs the search for the ED, I think, I mean, you can do the survey earlier, but, but then you just have the survey, right? Like, this should be a part of searching for a new leader, talking to staff, seeing what they need, what they want out of a new ED. So I would connect the two.
Yeah, I was just trying to.
Can I?
Oh, sorry.
No, no, please, no, Suzie, please, go ahead.
I was just looking at the Edison Public Library, I know that they did a community survey and a staff survey, their search process took a year and a half and two. Um, and I don't want necessarily wanna do that, but I do think that they were not, it's not in the RFP, so I'm under the impression that maybe it was separate. From their search firm, um, I suggested to Matt a whole weeks ago that I thought it should be integrated into the RFP. But you might be limiting your scope if you require a survey component of that, I think it's easier for us to get someone to work with. Us rather than us requiring that you can do all this, plus the.
Yeah.
I think it could inform the process if you were doing it in a way where we could get the data, you guys could get the data back from the search rooms and then review. And understand, because I will say, I think that, you know, there is a lot of different staff. There's a lot of issues here that do need to, an ED does need to be aware of, we're going to, and I think that, you know, I do think there's value in having. Some sort of staff and survey to highlight some of those, so do we wanna wait for the R?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm, I'm sorry, I, um. I just, I wanted to point out that the, 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 in my recollection, uh, the original plan for a staff survey. Had been that there is, uh, uh, a rubric in the evaluation of the ED. Like, oh, that's one of the, sorry, one of the categories of the rubric in the evaluation of the ED. Um, has to do with like promoting staff culture, et cetera, et cetera, and our point had been. That we don't know that, we don't, you know, like, and yet it is part of the job description. So it seems very legitimate that that's something that we, we evaluate the, um, ED on the basis of. And I guess what I'm trying to say is that obviously the situation has shifted and I, and I hear what Suzie's saying, that there is like, there are multiple things going on. But I want to also say that our plan had been, and I think it's really, really important that this continue. To have a mechanism for a staff survey that is connected to the ED evaluation process. Again, one of the, one of the things that was said in, um. In open comment today was that, uh, was the argument that we held. Um, this ED to a process or, or like our previous ED, sorry, uh, to a process. That, uh, eh, the executive directors before her had not been held to, and I think that the only way that we made sure that. We're not. You know, that, that we're like preventing the possibility of that is by having a regular. Just like a regular stated process and, and I, I don't want, I don't know what to do because it, uh, if we say we need two surveys, then we'll have to do two RFPs. And have two processes and there'll be two fees, two sets of fees, um, and I just. I think that the original piece is incredibly important, uh. But I guess the. Timing doesn't fit because obviously we don't. I don't think we and Suzie should be.
What are our immediate needs and what, how are we moving forward, I think, now, um, and then we. Yeah, I mean, there are multiple reasons for staff's survey or for anonymous, um. Admins of input from staff to be available, you know, because one of the other ones is that staff. Feel like they have somewhere that they can, can communicate. Um, honestly, um, but I think right now that what we want is to, to handle our current situation and, um. And that's to do with what this process is and, and how, so, how we, what kind of ED we get for our staff. Is their.
Yeah. I mean, we.
Day in and day out.
We do have. In the RFP that we approved, uh, we just worked on, we do have one of. The pieces that we want the search firm to do is. Um. Appropriate. Methods.
Mm-hmm.
For staff, leadership and community input. Does that, oh, sorry, does that meet? The current needs of the survey? One, and two. The regular evaluation, the regular check-in with the staff. Is a separate issue, but it's something that this board. I, I think has been pretty consistent in wanting to be done. The. Third bit, which I think we had talked about prior to, uh, you know, discussions of, of, um. Act, you know, people acting was to create some form of safe mechanism. That staff. Would be able to share concerns of.
I don't think.
Aggressiveness.
Proposals.
Right, and those proposals do not address that, so we haven't even touched that elephant in the room.
What?
The, the two issues right now are. The staff survey piece. Does. Does the solicitation of community leadership and staff feedback. Meet what we are trying to get at this point.
And that's.
For library staff.
And that's the question where we're, you know, trying to communicate with, um, Suzie and Lee about that is because. When we talked about it, we were wanting to have an idea. Before we go into the search process. Of what it is that we need. Um, but it sounds like.
I think there's a lot of, I think the complicated thing that's going on here in this library is there's a lot of eating visions and priorities. And that's where, like, a search is gonna, a survey might show that, that there, you know. It's a very divided staff and it's a very complic, like, I don't, you know. There's some stuff that needs to be discussed out, it's not just.
Right.
You know, the problems did not get solved for the action of work, the problems are still there.
Mm-hmm.
It's a very complicated issues, but it's, there's a lot of. Compounding factors to why these issues exist and I do think it all kind of came to a head at a certain time. Um, I, I am, you know, I think having this conversation is. I, you know, I'm up to my throat, I do think the staff survey might be helpful for the board to see what is actually playing out and maybe the voices that. Didn't speak up on both sides, you know, um. And. Maybe help shed light on what is, what the organization's struggles are, you know.
So, so Lee and Suzie, um, how can we best listen to the staff? In the next couple of weeks? In the next couple of weeks?
You know, I don't know the answer for that. I think that we're, we're kind of all just trying to keep ourselves moving forward. And I have been asked that question, like, how are we supposed to appeal and make us whole and, um, but I, I think. Really making sure that a director, the next ED that you hire understands. The culture here and, and the direction of the board and, and some of that. So, you know, I think going with the survey would be probably, you know. If you could get the survey done before the search start, like, you know, that it could influence if the timing could line up. I think it would be an effective thing. I did wanna note that this is a twelve thousand dollar survey that the, um.
Holistic.
Holistic, which I think is a reasonable price for a survey. However, if this can't be built into a three sixty director.
Should, you gotta find a super.
Yeah, seven twelve thousand dollars every year to evaluate. There are other methods that you can do to, to understand if there are things happening.
But I think, and I think that might be that conversation of what, you know, a, as we. Began to reevaluate, you know, reevaluate the, about, you know, the process for evaluating the director and how, and what goes into that. That piece of doing a three sixty and what that firm is and who, and, and what that looks like. Is gonna be different than a, you know, a fifty to sixty to seventy question survey. About the library and other things that are, that, that a firm like Yardstick or Holistic does. Is not gonna be the same as what we look for. And I think your, your point is well taken in terms of. How that doesn't, this, this kind of investment, this kind of project doesn't. Meet those same needs as that. So I think if we're looking at it from a perspective of. Where, where are we now? What, and working with. Either firm to move forward and constructing a survey that, that is forward looking, that is. Assessing, you know, getting into the temperature of, of where the culture is now, but also. That piece of looking forward of what is that? By the time. Like, if we, if we can make a decision tonight, you know, it's still six weeks. Six, seven weeks at the most optimistic, that puts us at the end of May.
Well, that was gonna be my question about the timeline is if we got RFPs out for a search firm, those are gonna be out when making a decision. The end of May. Do we feel comfortable after seeing the RFPs and how these folks are. Deciding to get this feedback from staff? Do we feel comfortable then saying? Okay, we've chosen a search candidate that will do both pieces. Or we've chosen this candidate, they won't do both of those pieces, and so we choose someone to partner with them. I think we still get those eight weeks to line up where we can get the feedback back from the staff. Unless I'm mapping incorrectly, which is completely possible.
I'm following it, you, but that, I, I feel like I kind of initially.
I feel like it's.
I'm seeing some knowledge.
This, that was the original discussion last month, I think, where, when we were trying to form the timeline. So that's why we wanted to vote on the. Survey tonight so that we could kind of get it up and running so that it could inform the search. I just think, yeah, I, I appreciate the conversation and the pause. I just, I think the public is not clear why we're doing it, so we just need to probably. I think our conversation today did a good job of that, so thank you all.
Yeah, and we have different needs and they, they will be served by different.
Yeah, I think we've completed three different types of feedback.
Right.
During this process and that has not helped our communication to the public.
Yeah, no, I think there are three different needs.
Yeah, there are three very different needs and we've kind of been bopping between them as we have, but I think if tonight we're discussing. Input for the ED search, then they don't want us to. You know, pay for duplicative efforts if we. Get a firm that is willing to do the, or is able to do. The survey as part of the RFP. Do we want to opt for that? Or if we find a search firm that we like and we say, this is contingent on. You also using feedback from, you know, whatever survey that we're also going to. Because that would also allow us to do a one-to-one comparison on the prices because, you know, as we're talking about.
You're talking about then delaying our start of the survey, so then the timeline won't.
I don't know that it will delay because the search firm will still have to do their, their work to go out and find candidates. My thought is while they're out finding candidates, posting things, we would have.
At the beginning of the, of, at the beginning of the search firm is also data collection. There's gonna be a meeting with the board. There's gonna be a meeting with leadership team. There's gonna be a meeting that feeds the revision of the, so there'll be several weeks. After the end of May that we get up to speed and begin that process with the search firm. And if on that week of that, at that same meeting where we pick a search firm. We either say the search firm is also gonna do a survey as part of it, or we're gonna do the search firm A and. Survey firm B and we, part of that contingent is that they communicate with each other.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and make sure that they're okay with it. Like, we are, we are selecting you as a firm contingent that you will also work with so-and-so as they collect. Data from.
Yeah.
If, if we do it that way, I think we will have the six to eight weeks that we need to do the staff survey so that by the time. The search firm has a pile of people, they will also have the staff input to apply as the lens that they're looking.
The piece we won't have is in the job description. Like, we won't have the input from staff before we create the job description.
I don't know that.
I don't think that's as important.
Because the thing is, it's not necessarily in the job description that, it's gonna be in the candidates and in the candidate. And to get to know the candidate, that those are gonna be really critical. And a good search firm, like. Will be able to either use that survey to suss out in the conversations that are coming out. Or will be able to kind of help finesse, right, our, our marketing. Um, or the, the marketing of, of the, the search.
And I think it's also like the, um, it's gonna be the onboarding piece, or at least I hope that's what we're considering too, like, it's not. To me, it doesn't just end with the search firm, like, if we're trying to get a, a pulse check on staff and how everyone's faring. And where the divides are and who's most affected, then like, my hope would be that we're also preparing whoever we bring on. These are the things that are going on. This is how, these are the strategies that our firm has, um, provided for, for onboarding. Like, I, I would hope that that's also part of this too.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. I think you're gonna set up your new ED for success if you have this part, that you can hand them and have them understand. Some of this stuff.
Yeah, definitely, that's absolutely one. Yeah.
Yeah.
Put men in the process.
Yeah.
But it's, so Lee, when you were saying you thought that it should be connected to the process.
Mm-hmm.
In what way were you meaning that? Like, um, exactly how Virginia said.
Okay.
And I would say that when I talked with holistic, and I'm hoping that this would be something we also be able to coordinate with Yardstick, if that's who we go with. But holistic, Tom was saying that they would be willing to schedule. You know, a half hour, hour with any finalist candidate to walk through survey results. With that candidate as part of our evaluation of candidates. So that, you know, those people could have, you know, those finalists, as we bring them in and stuff, would get a briefing from the survey firm. On what, on those findings, you know, so it's like, I, I think that's something we could also ask of Yardstick, if that's who we go with. Or whomever else. I think that that is, that piece of setting them up for success is like giving them that time to wait. Give them that information so they can present to us and speak to us. Hey, this is what we. You know, I, I hear, I see where this data is, I see what this, what the staff temperature is. And here is, would be my approach to, you know, addressing these concerns, addressing these staff. Things, I think that could be part of that process.
And then there are things that, um, that are being kind of set up on there, like umbrellas, where there's like.
Yeah.
Similar, you know, that they might have worked well together.
Yeah.
Um.
This can be part of the questions that we go back and ask some of the finalists and like, is this something that you already have access to? This is something that you do on a regular basis, or are you willing to work with a, a separate lender that we choose?
Yeah.
Or they may have suggestions.
Maybe, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Are we.
Do we feel comfortable with?
Are we comfortable tabling this decision until we review the, the, the search firm finalists?
May I move to table?
Can I ask one thing really quick? Um, cause Matt, you said you had conversations with. Holistic, I think, and I think you sent some notes from Adam too. But I, I just remember seeing the proposals. Did you go through like all the questions that we developed together? Like, do you have?
Yes.
Cause I would be curious to see some of the, like, there were just some missing things that I wasn't sure about.
Yeah, I can type those, I can type those up and, and share, and share those. Um, so I have it written down. I'll be happy to. To, to share those with the group as, you know, we have time before our next meeting. Um, okay, so that. That's been, that, that's been tabled, um.
Should we have to vote to table it or?
Maybe, yes, because there wasn't, there wasn't a motion, so we don't need to table it. Thank you, Ted, for jumping in on that. That was. If we had a motion, that would have been appropriate, but we didn't, so we, we can just table without that, um. And then, since we don't have anything for close session, the last item would be the interim leadership based off of. Conversation from, uh, Britt, um, our councilwoman, Angela Blank. Uh, we, to comply with state law, we need to have a formal vote for the interim leadership at this time. Um, just a sense of the board, a consensus of the board is not sufficient to, to meet our obligation. Um, so would there be a motion to name Lee Terulo and Suzie Wolf as our. Um, interim leader, uh, directors of the library, uh, as we proceed with. Our full-time executive director search and at the, at the end of that time. Lee and Suzie would then return to their previous, uh, roles, uh, full-time.
Could we amend that?
Second.
Yes, oh, um, Ted, uh, hold on a second, um, would you all, would you amend that motion? To also include the salary increase that was discussed at our last meeting?
May I ask, may I ask, may I ask what, uh, the interim director, uh, the former interim director received per month?
I, I don't have, I don't have a recollection or that information of what. Uh, Lori was, was making per month as, as the interim. Uh, Suzie and Lee have asked for, uh, the, the, a comparable. Uh, in line with that, with the, with a dollar amount increase, but I do believe Lori's. Base salary was also higher than both Lee and Suzie's current base salary.
Thank you.
So, are you comfortable with that amendment, Ted?
I am.
All right, thank you. Is there a second? Second, Maya? Um, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, is there, uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? It is passed. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And gratitude.
And yes, especially gratitude.
Especially gratitude, yeah.
To have been, like, really been very much appreciated and everybody that you have stepped up is very much appreciated.
And on that note, I just would also like to extend gratitude to the entire staff. I know this is National Library.
It's.
You know, week and, um, just please let them know how much the board appreciates. Them, um, and particularly on this time.
I noticed the box downstairs was full. I tried to cram other things out.
That was a staff member's suggestion that we do that and Jody was able to get that up and running, so.
That was brilliant. I think a lot of people came in during the athletes and I think dropped some things. So I think that that was just on the next, I don't, it's been a whole week, I hope.
Year ago. Monday was a really, it's been a long year. Since Monday.
Yes. All right, with that, we have, uh, before we adjourn, um. Ted has expressed interest, um, to being on the evaluation committee for the RFPs. Uh, if anyone else, um, besides Christina would like to be part of the evaluation process. I'm not saying you can't help craft a rubric. But I, I don't wanna commit, I, I don't, I'm not comfortable with letting you commit to time when after your baby's born for a little while, all right? Um, I just.
You're crazy on that rubric, girl. Yeah.
You will do.
Uh, you could, you don't have to speak up now if you wanna be on that committee of three, but, uh, let's, I'd like to get that, uh. Set in the next week or so. Um, if I don't hear from three people by the end of next week, I'll start nagging.
No, no, Matt, 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 two more people.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, Ted, yes, two more people.
A minimum of two.
A minimum of two other people. Uh, with that, we have concluded our agenda and we stand adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.